We're gonna start off this evening with our student representative Ella, give us her student report.
So, I don't have much today, but for starters, the youth book fair is Friday and Saturday, March 28th and 29th, but is not during, is not happening during school hours, so just be sure if your kids wanna buy books to go from five on Friday and nine on Saturday. And then a big announcement is next Thursday, Friday and Saturday will be the high school musical, so that is gonna be featuring Mamma Mia, and we're gonna have all the ABBA songs included, and amazing dancing, and I know everyone's been working really hard, I actually just came back from rehearsal, and honestly, I think it's gonna be amazing, and it's such a fun experience, and I really encourage everyone to go see it. And then also, next Saturday, which is April 5th, I should say, is the FMS Science Fair, so science research students have been helping the middle schoolies to build on their ideas and formulate projects, so they're also learning about the components on what it takes to have a project, and being judged, and also how to present that, so it's a very big opportunity, and there will be winners, I believe. And then finally, last week was the high school Battle of the Bands, so we, I went with all my friends, and we were able to see a bunch of amazing upcoming artists, so some of them were like this duo called Etu Brute, and then also, we got to see Jazz Band in Between, and this band called The Ruby, which everyone was singing, and we also got to see our very own music teachers perform, which is a very new experience, and it was like they were their own rock band, because of professionals. So, the Rubies didn't, so I wanna say congratulations to them, and also congratulations to everyone, because that's really putting yourself out there is scary.
Yeah, sure.
That's all I have.
Ella, thank you, thank you very much. I just wanted to note, our trustee Solia Robles is out this evening with a herniated disc, so she started, she can't be here, and trustee Jody Myers is running late, she's gonna be here shortly. So, I'm gonna hand it over to Dr. Mercurcy to open up for the first presentation of the evening, which is behind us, and if anybody cannot see, is that, that's the presentation?
Yeah, we, we have handouts of the presentation, quite intentionally hard copies, because there's a lot of detail which we know you won't be to see necessarily on the screen, so would urge you to make sure you have this. We don't usually have these handouts, but we thought for this particular presentation is very important. So, Board, very pleased to bring you an updated instructional budget. We met two weeks ago, lots of comment from you as Board, we've been receiving a lot of input, particularly around questions about the high school. As is, as I had stressed at the start of my presentation, we, we go into about a five or six week process reviewing the budget. So you had the operational budget in essence, then you had the instructional budget, and it's quite natural to have questions, thoughts, feedback from you, and then we modify, and this now is quite a significantly modified budget. So Board, I'd ask you to listen very carefully as we go through the building level budget impacts. Quite importantly, this will be presented by the principals, who've been working very, very closely the last couple of weeks amongst themselves, with their teams, with Melissa Smanyski, Maureen Carbello, and ultimately with me, to bring you this. And it is a, within the tax cap, so we've been working really hard to stay there in deference to the taxpayers of Hastings. At the same time, we have a school system that very much needs all the resources that are laid out here, and I wanted, beginning of this, thank the principals for really rolling up their sleeves, and I would urge you to, again, listen very carefully, this is a different recommended budget instructionally than you received two weeks ago. So I will open, as I've just done, we then will go down the line, starting with Hillside, then going with Amy Casas, then going to FMS with Scott Winn, and then with Andy Kleiman for the high school, that'll be the most amount of detail. After they're done, we will stop for you as a Board to ask questions, we will then swing to Maureen Carbello giving an update on the pure financials, because I am very pleased with where we are, it's a very important budget to support at this point, because I think as you'll hear, it is bringing our students what they need. At the same time, my obligation as superintendent, your obligation as a Board, is to be looking out multiple years. So we are facing a number of difficult years, we are trying to spread that out, and we need to talk to you about the implications of this budget going forward. Again, though, very simple, this is the budget to support for our students, and to balance that with what the taxpayers of Hastings would prefer. So with that, I'm gonna turn it to Amy Casas to start.
Okay, great, can you hear me?
It's not on there. I think that one's on, I see the, I see the green light on there.
Can you hear me here?
No, maybe not.
Maybe it holds up? All right, is that better?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, so good evening, everybody, I'm here to really just share about Hillside. The first slide, which you'll see here, really outlines the highlights that we have, and that we've created over a number of years, and, you know, in the last number of years that we've been together, we've thought about how we could further enhance Hillside, and what are the special things that could make our school not only good, but great. And as you'll see on the left-hand side, a number of those things are listed. What you'll see on the right, in the red box, is the impact, so for example, we created a 1.0 school counselor position, the impact is that there's big focus on SEL and the whole child, and you'll see for each of those things, that there is an impact, and a very positive one. In this budget, we looked at what were the opportunities that we had, and also what were the things that were non-negotiables, we did not want to change, and we're really proud of the fact that we're able to maintain all of the things that you're seeing on the left-hand side. Two of the things that I'll focus on specifically, one is the ICTs on each grade level, with a general education and a special education teacher in the classes full-time, and the other one is the small class size. You know, part of what's so special about the Hillside program is the differentiated instruction that our teachers are providing to students, and small class sizes allow us to do that, so thank you for being able to help us maintain that. Here we go, on the next slide, you'll see the recommended staffing changes, you'll see that there is an addition of 10 minutes per cycle for each class at Hillside and art, and that's just shifting some minutes from the ILC, which is our Innovation Learning Commons, over to art. You'll also see a few reductions, the .2 PE reduction is, in essence, what we have right now this year, it's maintaining the same number of sections. The 1.0 teaching assistant is a first grade teaching assistant, we are going to align our first grade with grades two through four with one teaching assistant on the grade level. We did reduce a permanent substitute, if we need per diem subs, we'll be able to hire them, but this way we won't just have somebody here on a day where we may not need someone. We're reducing two lunch recess monitors, and then there's a 1.4 reduction in ENL district-wide, and that's just specifically based on what our students directly need. So when you see the staffing changes here, what you'll note is that there are not many additions for Hillside, and we're comfortable with that, because we recognize from a bird's eye view, that this is the year of Farragut Middle School, and, you know, we've done a lot of wonderful things at Hillside, and now we're ready to see Scott realize his amazing vision as he heads forward with the middle school.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Amy, I appreciate that, and really, truly, building for the middle school really takes its lead from the tremendous work that has happened at Hillside over the past couple of years, and we are truly looking to kind of continue that work and build on the program that currently exists at the middle school. So looking at what you see here, just about everything on this list comes directly from the FMS action plan that was presented to you last year, really setting a vision for what we wanted the middle school to look like. So based upon this budget, you can see there's three major categories that we focused on, first being the structural, so the budget currently provides us with the opportunity to provide six sections at each of the four grade levels, which will really make the overall class size much more manageable. We're also looking at the master schedule, looking at the inequities that exist within the master schedule, trying to create a master schedule that truly represents a middle school philosophy, and that really balances things appropriately. The goal here is to create a schedule that reduces, especially for our students that receive services, whether they be AIS services, ENL services, special education services, kind of reduce the amount of time that they are losing from other instructional program. So a lot of our students, when they take different support classes, they'll miss out on some of our electives, some of our encore classes, and the goal here is trying to minimize that to the extent that we possibly can. In terms of student supports, last year, we were able to secure a 1.0 MTSS specialist in mathematics, we did not have that similar structure in ELA, and this budget provides for that 1.0 level of services in ELA. Another thing that has been important for us to expand upon, and this is something that builds upon the program that's at Hillside, would be providing some opportunities for math enrichment. We provided a lot of services for our students who are struggling, now it's time to also balance that out, and be able to provide those opportunities for enrichment, and we're looking for that to happen in grades six and seven, which will provide a natural bridge for the possibility of students being in algebra in eighth grade. In addition, we wanted to expand our academic program, so we've done that in a number of different ways. So next year, as we know, we have the new earth science Regents exam, which will be extremely different than what we've seen in the past, and we really wanted to provide some additional levels of support, so that we could continue providing the Earth Science for All program that we do at FMS. So we'll be expanding, currently, we provide lab two days out of a six-day cycle, we're bumping that up to three days out of a six-day cycle, and we think that will provide another layer of support for students as they begin that new earth science curriculum. We're looking to expand our technology program, and bring that down to fifth grade, and also create a STEAM program that will be one day out of the six-day cycle for our fifth-grade students, introducing them to, and continuing the STEAM program that exists at Hillside, and bringing that up to the middle school. We have the opportunity to expand our ELA program in sixth grade, you know that we previously had had two periods of ELA for sixth grade, we transitioned back to one period, and, you know, based upon some of the feedback received from the teachers, we wanted to add in a, an additional skills-type program. I'm in discussions with the sixth-grade teachers in terms of what they think would be most appropriate, whether that be a writing skills program, or something else that they deem as really being the necessity to build the skills of our students in sixth grade, and that will be one quarter for every student. One of the biggest things that I think I heard here in Hastings, but is also common amongst all middle schools across the country, is looking at adolescents and being able to build their executive functioning skills. This is a critical part, and we hear this also from our high school colleagues, as our students transition from middle school into high school, looking at the ability to have time management skills, to have organizational skills, note-taking skills, are they really prepared to tackle homework on their own, rather than being supported all the time? Are they able to self-reflect and be reflective on their own? And these are the kinds of skills that we wanna try to build while they're at FMS, to make them that much more successful as they get into Hastings High School. So we're looking at adding an executive functioning class for our sixth and seventh-grade students. In terms of financial literacy, financial literacy is a new part of the requirements of New York State, we're gonna be looking at the new Regents requirements and graduation requirements, and financial literacy is rising to the top of the list, and we felt that this was the opportunity to really begin that program with our students as they enter into high school, give them the foundational information, and provide a financial literacy class for all of our students. And finally, our Exploring Equity program, which we have built from the Courageous Conversations program, we are looking to provide a dedicated teacher for that program. Our current teachers, two ELA teachers and one ENL teacher, have done a spectacular job over the past couple of years building that program and developing that program, but we really wanna find someone who has a background, and who can really provide the skills necessary for our students in these really challenging conversations. And we think that providing a dedicated teacher for that program, who would do the Exploring Equity in six, seven, and eight, would be beneficial for all of our students. So moving forward, we can see the, the impacts that are there, in terms of authentic learning experiences, stabilizing our MTSS program, and really building towards an increased focus on that instructional pedagogical improvement of the middle school, is all built within these three categories. So in terms of additions, we're looking at a 1.0 to fifth grade, a 1.0 to ELA for the MTSS structure, .0 for executive functioning, a .6 in science, which would cover that additional earth science piece, and a .5 shared teaching assistant to build a testing center that would be shared between the middle school and the high school, to provide support to our students that do receive accommodations, whether they be 504 accommodations, IP accommodations, we can provide that through a testing center. In terms of reductions, we'd have a 1.0 reduction in special education, that is not a cut-in program, that is just based upon student need, and we're actually shifting that 1.0 from us over to the high school, where that need is kind of traveling. We're reducing .4 in physical education and health, just by the nature of our student population, and again, as Amy spoke to, we've got the district-wide reduction in ENL and the permanent substitute. So that is really the, the big picture on the middle school, and I'm gonna turn it over to Andy to take us on to Hastings High School.
Thank you. Thanks, Scott, thanks, Amy. So, the Hastings High School budget has been revised, based on some significant feedback, and I think before we kind of dive into the nuts and bolts of it, obviously, this is my first year at the helm at Hastings, and throughout this whole process, Tara and I have just been so beyond blown away with the support that we've received from, from district-level administration, from teachers, from families, from students, from the Board, and obviously, the initial proposal, there were anxieties, because Hastings High School is such an excellent educational institution, and no one wants to see that diminish in any way, shape, or form, and there were concerns that the initially proposed budget had the potential to do that, and so I was given the green light from Dr. Mercurcy to go back to the drawing board with, especially with teacher leadership, to really roll up our sleeves and figure out what is required within a tight budget situation to ensure that the lived experience of our high school students remains the same. There might be tweaks in programming, but the elective offerings, the AP offerings, we wanna make sure that, that those continue to function at the high level. So, to cut to the major highlights, and we'll get into some, some detail around some of these pieces in a minute, the major highlights are that the new proposed budget includes no decrease in electives or AP offerings from this year, the 24, 25 year to the 25, 26 year. I do wanna ensure that I pin, no decrease in electives or AP offerings does not mean that every course that's listed in the course catalog runs every single year. Sometimes they cycle out on a bi, on a biannual basis, sometimes we have four students who sign up for an elective, and, and in order to make sure that we're running class, classes that are responsive to student need, the four-section elective wouldn't run, and the teaching capacity would be reallocated towards another course that has higher interest. So I don't want to leave that bullet with the misconception that that means every elective is running, it means that we're functioning at the same teaching capacity vis-à-vis electives and AP offerings from this year to next year, so we would not expect to see any change in student experience there. The second major highlight is that there is no change to the average, the average class size remains small, and that's less than 20 students on average. One thing that I know came up in family comment, in, not, not just families who commented, but in, in, in public comment, thank you, during the last session, was concern about class size, and many class sizes that are already at 25, 26, 27. And so when we're looking at the average class size, that doesn't mean that we don't have classes that are running at that higher end of the spectrum, it does mean that, that those classes are offset by a BC Calc class that has 10 students in it. It means that it's offset by a photography class that, because we only have 15 computers in the digital photography suite, that is the cap of students who can be in the space. So the average class size is an average, there are, there remain classes that are on the higher end of the spectrum. Another major highlight is that we are excited to be able, that we were able to hold on to the expansion of the science research program. The science research program is currently a pinnacle of the student experience here. We have students who are receiving rewards from, from Regeneron, who are headed to national competitions, and coming home with accolades from that, and in terms of the portrait and the experience around authentic learning and public-facing products, it's really cutting-edge. And so the expansion of the science research program into 10th grade allows us to build on a very strong program, and it also allows us to offer college credit for that coursework. And the fourth highlight is that, in order to continue to hold on to some of the efficiencies that were presented in the initial budget, we are continuing to look at academic intervention services with a scalpel, to really prioritize effective utilization of staff, so that we're able to, so we're able to meet students' academic needs, and the, the structure that was in place previously, while it had lots of benefits, we feel we're able to get the same outcomes around student supports with less personal utilization. So, what we have right here is a slide that articulates the initially recommended staffing changes, I won't linger on it for very long, because it's no longer what we're presenting, but we wanted to make sure that it was in the public record, what the initial presentation was, and what the change is for next, for next year. The one piece that I, that I do wanna pin that came up through public comment, and through some of the emails that, that I received, that Dr. Mercurcy received, and that I know the Board received, is the, the way the full-time equivalent, the FTE, structure works. And so, for example, in the English department, we have one teacher who's retiring, and that teacher is, constitutes one full-time equivalent, one FTE, and that means that that teacher's capable of teaching five classes. So, Dr. Mercurcy spoke during our last session of staffing in decimals, this is what he meant by that. So, .2 FTE is one teaching period, so .2 times five is one full teaching period. So, we have a retirement in ELA, and that's a full 1.0 FTE, and in the initial proposal, we were adding, there's currently a teacher who's teaching for part of her day in, in the special education department, she has her English license as well, and so she could switch to full-time in the English department, and that's what the, the decimals there indicate. So that's just to expand a little bit on some of the, the math that went into parsing out those reductions. But we can skip to the next slide, and this speaks to the initially presented program implications, specifically that the, in the last proposed budget, there, in order to absorb the reduced teaching capacity, it would include not running an elective that had the lowest enrollment, and it would include an increase in average class size. And if we keep going, we will see that in the next iteration, some of those adverse impacts, we've, we've worked to ameliorate. But before we get into that, the, I, I mentioned it a little bit at the beginning of, of my section, but this really did take an entire team to get really, really granular with this work. We sat with the chairs of all of the departments, and we looked at historical data, we looked at projected data, we talked about, you know, if, if students are not taking this elective, then they're, the students don't disappear, and we don't want them going into a study hall unless they want a study hall, so they've gotta show up somewhere else, and so where else, what else could that look like? And so, it really was extraordinarily collaborative, and I'm very appreciative of my team for the work that they put into putting this together. And I think the one other piece that I wanna highlight is that the academic intervention services, which I know that Dr. Smanyski will expand on later this evening, and the restructuring, there is widespread consensus among my team that we can get the same outcomes as significant, with significant reductions in resource allocation. The, the current structure, we understand why it was created, the way it was created, but we can get more with, without the same allocation of staff. So with that, the current recommending staffing changes are laid out in front of us, it is a .2 reduction, it is a .5 addition to special education, that's up from .3 in the initial proposal, it's a .2 reduction in ELA, which is a .2, I gotta do the math right, it, the .2 reduction in ELA is a smaller reduction than the initially proposed .4 reduction in ELA. This proposed budget has a .1 reduction in social studies, and that is a significantly smaller reduction than, let me get it right in front of me, than the initially proposed .4 social studies reduction in the initial budget, and there is a .6 math reduction, which is, again, a smaller reduction than the initially proposed 1.0 reduction that was from the first, the first proposal. The other piece that we wanted to make sure we highlighted, that is not a, it's not a budget-driven reduction, per se, but it does have staffing implications on the high school, is that the reduction in physical education, in, in FMS and Hillside, as well as the addition of art department efficiencies in Hillside, have the potential to have some staffing impacts at the high school. None of these staffing impacts will result in a reduction of elective offerings or anything of that nature, but we wanted to, and this is separate from the, the very kind of tense budget situation that we find ourselves in this year, this is standard. It is standard that due to enrollment fluctuations year to year in buildings, that staff is reallocated, especially shared staff in the arts and in physical education, but we wanted to make sure that we included that information on this slide, because we didn't want it to feel like a surprise if that came to anyone's attention, that, that there was movement in staff in those subject areas. So, the, the exciting highlights here are that this proposed budget has no reduced offerings, that all academic electives continue to run as in previous years, and that we're also go, expecting to see an expansion of the science research program into 10th grade, we're thrilled to have been able to hold on to that in the, even, even with the tight budget. And the, the AIS efficiencies will result in an increase in average AIS size, currently, our average AIS class size is approximately two students per, per section, and we believe we can provide the same closely tailored academic coaching experience with classes up to about seven students. The next three slide decks are sample departmental analyses, these are not, these are not the course offerings, or these are not teacher schedules for next year, teacher schedules for next year cannot be created until students complete their course requests, and... requests and the guidance team is hard at work making sure that we get those in a timely fashion, but they're not done at this point. So, what this slide is meant to illustrate is how we can retain the same course offerings without a kind of one-to-one FTE replacement of retiring staff. So, you'll see on the left-hand side is the, is an example of three teacher's schedules in the English department. You'll see that we're offering AP literature, two sections, we're offering Supa 12, we're offering literature and film, and we're also offering three sections of academic intervention services and all three teachers are teaching those three, the one section. By seeking efficiencies in the AIS scheduling and structure, the proposed budget eliminates two sections of that AIS. So, you'll see on the right-hand side in the proposed, kind of the projected teaching allocation, that we're still offering the same two AP literature courses, we're still offering literature and film, we're still offering Supa 12, but the slide, the table on the left-hand side is a three point oh FTE and the table on the right-hand side is a two point six FTE. So, that's kind of a graphic illustration of, of how we're able to offer the same course load, offer the same elective offerings without necessarily replacing one-to-one the retiring staff. And the footnote on the bottom is to really highlight that the courses available to students, the students' lived experience between the two years is identical. And so, the next two slides kind of walk through the same, the same piece for social studies and for math. We can go straight to the math one. It is important to note that for math, the reduction is slightly larger, it is a point six reduction and of that point six, so again, the point six is three teaching periods. Of that, of those three teaching periods, two of them are taken account of through the AIS restructuring and one of them is taken account through, taking a look at the average algebra class size. The average algebra class size is currently seventeen and in order to accomplish the point, that additional period reduction, we, the average class size would go up to twenty students. So, it would, it would just redistribute some of the students from, from one section across the, the remaining other sections of algebra. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Samansky.
Yeah, let me transition, but I think what I'd like us to do, if we could, is get through the AIS piece and then come to board questions. And the reason the principals work so closely with Mrs. Samansky on this is, one, I want to be super clear, nobody works in Hastings and does not care about comprehensive in-depth services for our children. Let me repeat that. We care deeply about that, people work with me, know my first priority is doing best for all of our children in all ways. We understand, given good history with AIS, we can still do it better. As Mr. Kleiman and Ms. Ware have seen coming with some fresh eyes, Mr. Nguyen and Dan Waldeck have seen that, and Amy's giving us a model, Amy Kaisers at, at the, at the elementary level. So, I want to stress here that please listen carefully because this is where we've gone to find deficiencies, but to me, I'd rather say it's optimal. How do we get high-level effectiveness at the most efficient level? And this deserves some time because we had lots of questions from you as a board and we fielded a lot of questions from the community about, if this is your place for efficiency, help me know that you still care about each of our children and their educational outcome. We think we can get there better with what we're about to present.
Okay, so I'm going to speak a little bit about AIS and also MTSS and I'm going to try to distill the acronyms into ways that we can be talking about boots on the ground with this. So, AIS is Academic Intervention Services. The broader umbrella under which AIS sits is MTSS. And what that is, is a multi-tiered system of supports process. So, that's a framework and think of it as an umbrella. And under the umbrella sits academics, behavior, and social emotional supports for students. So, MTSS is that broader umbrella and what we'll be zooming in on is the academic intervention portion of it. But I did want to provide a little bit of additional context. So, MTSS has three fluid tiers. And so, it's not that a progression is necessarily set in stone, that a student is in tier one, then moves to tier two, then moves to tier three. There's monitoring that goes on to make sure that students are getting the appropriate services. When we think about the first tier, tier one, think about the classroom environment. So, that's core instruction and having supports that are put in place that are specific for students' needs within the classroom. And that's differentiated support, we call that. Then the next tier is tier two and that's often done in small group interventions. That can occur in the classroom, but often it, it is outside of the classroom. So, there's a referral that's made for additional support that sits beyond the classroom environment and that is targeted. And it's meant to be for a very specific period of time and it's meant to be based on data around student needs, around what's the best next step to provide instruction to really escalate growth for that student. And then there's progress monitoring along the way and check-ins to see the growth. Then tier three is more intensive. That's an intensive support for students with significant needs and it's generally provided by a specialist and that's an individualized intervention. So, in Hastings, we have some different types of MTSS services that we offer more consistently. So, at Hillside, at Farragut, and at the high school, the MTSS services all include ELA, mathematics, and counseling support. At Hillside, we also have speech and occupational therapy that is a consistent offering. So, getting back to AIS, when we're thinking about those interventions in tier two or tier three, it's again, typically outside of the classroom environment. So, here's what it looks like in Hillside. There's a regular, and I'm distilling it to the forest version of all this, there's a lot that goes into this process, but as an overview, there's a regular review that occurs around academic screening data, testing data, how are students performing in the classroom, to what extent are they making progress? And they're referred to the MTSS team for consideration of tiered intervention by members of the faculty. So, that can be an administrator, a teacher, a counselor, someone who's part of that data review process. And when a concern is raised, that is when a student would be flagged to go into this process. So, all K-four teachers meet with the MTSS team, there's a team that's established and that happens monthly. And any student with need is discussed and interventions might be then determined and put into place for that child for within the classroom, in that second tier. Then the progress monitoring occurs. If a student isn't responding to those interventions, that's when they go to the MTSS team. Okay? So, then that, it becomes a more formalized process where that team meets two times each cycle and the student is discussed. The student performance, what is the progress, what are the needs? And that is richly grounded in data and there are very specific interventions that are put into place. There is a very specific timeline for monitoring those interventions and there are metrics for success that are put into place. So, if a student reaches here, they've made the success that we're expecting. So, you can see here, there are ninety-two students that are currently receiving MTSS in reading. And I want to take you to the last column in the chart that says classroom tier two only. So, that's within the classroom interventions. But if you look back to that second column, MTSS T-two, that's tier two support that's happening outside of the classroom. There are twenty-three students currently receiving that level of support. And then in the next column, you're seeing the twenty-four in, in tier three. Now, I do want to say that at Hillside, the process is such that, and actually, the way that MTSS is designed is, it is not a for-life process. You're not supposed to remain in it. It's, you're supposed to receive the interventions, monitor the growth, see the growth, and exit MTSS, right? That's the ideal. So, you're seeing those numbers with the understanding that students are cycling and that is based on needs. And some students do need to stay longer than others based on their level of need. This next slide shows mathematics. There are fifty-four students currently receiving MTSS in math, some of whom are also reflected in that other number of ninety-two for reading. So, fifty-four students receiving MTSS and it's the same idea. A number of students are receiving classroom tier two interventions only and then some are receiving tier two or tier three by an interventionist outside of the classroom. So, at, do you want to add? No, you can add it.
Just in regard to the math, the number of fifty-four, that's a lower number, but we also only have one interventionist. So, that's the reason, it's not that, you know, we don't have more children perhaps, but the bar is a different bar because we only have one interventionist in math and two in reading.
So, at the middle school, the process is different. So, the idea is the same, where based on a regular review of academic screening data, for example, we have Renaissance Star and that's administered multiple times throughout the year in grades K through eight, testing data, academic performance and progress data. Students are referred to the MTSS team for consideration of tiered interventions. So, you're seeing a replication there in terms of how they get there. Referral may occur by any staff member, so again, students are coming through the faculty. The FMS MTSS team meets one time every other week, they discuss student academic performance, they discuss progress, and if a student's not responding, then the MTSS team will discuss additional interventions. So, there are some really good things that have been happening based on increased attention to strengthen the MTSS process at the middle school over the past couple of years and we still have areas for growth. We have some aspirational next steps where we really want to see an amplified use of data as we're talking about students' interventions and their needs and being very clear on benchmarks for success and monitoring those success metrics and constantly coming back to the data. So, those are some next steps from a process perspective for MTSS at the middle school. And here are some numbers and this is the current school year. So, on the left, it's an overview of tier one interventions and just talking about the types of tier one interventions that all students receive. So, there's in-class intervention, there's support, there's differentiation, we have after-school during that academic coaching period, two forty-five to three fifteen, and we have National Honor Society tutoring in nearly all subject areas, so all students can access those things. The chart on the right is showing the tier two and tier three interventions that are occurring outside of the classroom. We, you can see each section of AIS that's being offered. The middle column highlights the content area and we do have two sections in earth science this year that we're able to deliver and you'll also see the number of students enrolled. Now, the prevailing wisdom on AIS, on academic intervention, is that earlier is better. You want to really make sure that the, the sooner you get in there to support students, the better. So, you're seeing total numbers of students higher at the elementary school, higher at the middle school, making sure early intervention is key. Now, the Hastings High School AIS process is up for you on the screen. We do have a number of opportunities for growth to strengthen the process itself at the high school and there is a connection with, with what was being described around the number of students in AIS and how we're structuring and scheduling it. So, I'll take us through the process. So, the, the high school student support team, they call it the SST, meets one time a week and discusses students who have needs that might lead to either in-school or after-school support. Counselors refer the students and also some students self-refer and sometimes a parent refers a student. And so, that's how students are primarily getting to AIS, to getting, getting scheduled for AIS. It's currently again, offered in ELA and math, it's very frequently offered right now throughout the high school day. The original design of that was so that students who were more vulnerable academically would have avenues in their program, in the master schedule, so that they didn't get blocked off from taking certain courses. And I'll speak to that a little bit about how we're being solutions-focused within the budgetary context. And then again, AIS is occasionally offered in other areas based on teacher availability. So, this year, for example, there could be someone with a section available in their schedule and therefore, perhaps a social studies AIS period would be offered, right? And so that there's staffing that occurs. Additional avenues of support for our high school students, just like in the middle school, we have in-class differentiation intervention, lunch support, academic coaching at the end of the day, and also National Honor Society tutoring. So, here for you to view is some of the data around AIS enrollment at the high school for the current school year. So, AIS at the high school is scheduled by semester, so students are in for a semester and they may or may not come out based on progression and program. One of the things that is, and I put some numbers here regarding full-time equivalent and what it means for staffing and how many periods, but what's really, really important that I want to draw everyone's attention to are the highlights in yellow. So, we are currently in the spring of twenty-five, running a number of AIS sections with one student. We have a section with zero students, so there, there is no enrollment, but we are running the class and staffing the class. And we also see a number of sections that have two students as well. So, the idea is to be very, very strategic with our scheduling of AIS so that we are keeping pathways for students and course selection open and also collapsing some of the sections where we see no or minimal enrollment to be able to ensure that we are reallocating staff in a way that preserves program, excellent experiences for students in a difficult budget scenario, and also is very strategic from a scheduling perspective so students' pathways stay open. So, that's part of the master scheduling process and will need to be considered. The number of students receiving AIS right now is small enough that we can look at individual students and we can look at programs and we can look at course requests and we can really get into the nitty-gritty on pathways to be able to do that well. So, from an aspirational perspective, we really want to be able to strengthen the AIS process so that there is a regular review of academic screening data, testing data, academic performance data, progress data. That referral to MTSS has a consistent through line of faculty referral through administrators, teachers, and continuing with the counselors, that the weekly review process takes place. But this idea that data is being used for targeted interventions and success metrics, that there is regular progress monitoring through use of the data, that we will be continuing to offer AIS in ELA and math. Again, the strategic scheduling will be key and the additional avenues for support will continue. So, we will have that peer lunch support, we will have academic coaching at the end of the day, National Honor Society. So, the projected impact for twenty-five, twenty-six, you can see there are two sections of ELA AIS, two sections of two sections of math AIS per semester strategically positioned. We will service a similar number of students. I've said in other audiences, I'd actually like to see more students being referred into the MTSS, and ultimately, less students as we continue to strengthen our processes in the middle school in terms of that through-line. And that will be done through a regular review of the data and thinking about targeted supports that we can be putting into place for students. Now, at the high school, we do have differentiated course pathways. So course offerings are another way that differentiation is occurring for students, and I didn't want to omit that because that's very important. So at the elementary school, the teachers are generalists. They teach every subject area. At the middle school, they take their ELA course, they take their math course. There is very little differentiation in the pathways of the courses themselves where we do see that open up at the high school level. So that is our presentation this evening.
Thank you, thank you, listen, thank you principals. I'm going to open up for questions, comments.
Go ahead. Thank you for the time and the willingness to go back to the drawing board and to really genuinely listen to parents, board members, teachers. It seems evident that there was a lot of work put into rethinking, reimagining, and intentionality around how to explain things, including your math lesson, which is helpful because it took me a minute, not now, but, you know, when I first started to figure that out. And I think it's important, a lot of feedback came from community members about retirees, and how can three people retire and we not have three full-time people replace those retirees? And I'm not sure that everyone was able to grasp it from this, but it's important to sort of understand that they were also doing other things too, like running HASP, peer leadership. And so I'm thinking about how you said that there's an ELA, a teacher with English certification at the high school who can now sort of jump in the ELA department. I'm hoping that that's someone who is as confident and experienced in the subject matter as the person who is retiring, who has taught the same subject matter for a certain amount of years. And maybe you can speak to that.
So I'll be careful not to speak individually for specific personnel, but just in general, I can say often we have people that straddle two departments, and they've done time accruing tenure in both and are doing both exceptionally well. And sometimes it's because they have multiple certifications, and they're passionate in both areas, and sometimes there are opportunities where they want to shift gears. There are other situations, again, speaking broadly, where people in one discipline have already been working exceptionally closely with people in another discipline, and they are seamlessly able to integrate their own expertise and actually bring two types of expertise, if they're duly certified, for example. So I think the question is not only fair, but our students demand it. Let's make sure that we have rigorous instruction that's happening. And when we are making shifts into an opening, if we are thinking about filling that internally or externally, that we bring on the strongest people that we can find in support of our students. Often, we can find that internal when someone is certified in multiple areas and already an ultimate insider and has participated in professional learning, has worked closely with the department, so that's a good thing.
And I'm thinking of the math, and it seemed like there were two AIS periods reduced and an algebra there, there, which leaves us with one AIS period. Can a full high school grade be served by one AIS period in math? Do you know what I mean? Is that what that means?
Yeah, I can take that. The AIS structure, the one AIS teaching period is actually split into two chunks of time. So at the high school, we're on a 40-minute period. So the way we maximize our personal utilization around AIS, and also kind of best practice around AIS, 80 minutes in an intervention period, is the research doesn't support 80 minutes in an intervention period. It supports more like 30 to 40 minutes. So what we do is we split the period in half. So one teaching period from a teacher would actually be two periods in the day, in the student's day. And Dr. Zamanowski spoke to the ways that we can be really strategic around how we allocate, how we make the math schedule to maximize the opportunities for students to be in those AIS periods, and then the ways that AIS is not something that you're in for the whole semester, but it's something that you cycle through during a six- or eight-week period. So we do expect to be able to serve the same number of students with those two teaching periods instead of the, with the, sorry, yeah, with the two periods in the student's day as opposed to what had been six periods in the student's day.
So two periods of AIS with a projected enrollment of seven in each, right?
With the projected enrollment in seven, and that, and they cycle. So it's for September and October, you have these students, and then they leave, and then another seven come in.
Okay, so when a student is referred to MTSS, how does that relate to having a 504? Does that go on their 504, or is it totally separate? It's totally separate. So it's really interesting to see the alignment of all the schools. There's a lot more special ed support at Hillside, and there's two ICT classes per grade. And are there any ICT classes in the high school? And what is happening with math ICT?
Sure. So all of our classes that are regents culminating classes are supported via an ICT model. So that's algebra, that's English nine, 10, and 11. That's world history nine and 10, and then US history 11, and that's biology. So the special ed services of ICT are, every class that culminates in a regent's is, we have ICT section support.
Okay.
There, since I got here, there have been some ongoing questions about the supports that we provide for students specifically in math and science after the
After ninth grade, right?
After ninth grade. So just because a student passes the regents doesn't mean that they, excuse me, doesn't mean that they suddenly don't require support in a subject area. It means that they've accomplished their graduation requirements as it relates to regents, but it doesn't mean that they don't need support. And so the current proposed budget includes not an ICT model, but a consultant teaching model for, to have more of a graduated release of services instead of essentially either ICT or nothing, or not nothing. We have LRC, Learning Resource Center. But it's an additional component of the continuum that allows us to provide more robust services for math and science.
So is the plan to offer that in every grade, in 10th, 11th, and 12th in science and math?
The consultant teaching model is not necessarily attached to a subject area. It's attached to a student's IEP.
Got it.
So it wouldn't be this class is supported via this model. It would be this student on their IEP stipulates that they would require this service, and teachers would work with the content, the special education teacher would work with the content area teacher to make sure that the accommodations are appropriately implemented.
And the teacher consultant model will be a newly adopted model in Hastings. I know it's like the thing now in special ed, so will that now be introduced to parents and be on IEPs instead of ICT class?
So this is the first time it's being offered at the high school. So first of all, I just want to recognize and thank the Special Education Advisory Committee that's been doing a lot of work over a long period of time. And one of those areas is around looking at our continuum of services. And so most districts don't have either no support or ICT support. There's typically something in the middle, like there's a continuum. And as Andy was saying, it is really important that we are tailoring our program to what students need, students need. So we look at our students, and then we say, okay, what's the need in terms of the class configuration? Then we build for children. And so, you know, one of the things that districts fall into the trap of is they have these structures, and they try to fit the children into them rather than saying, who are our kids? Let's design for our students. We want to make sure that we are delivering the least restrictive environment possible because that's the law, but it's also right for kids because you don't want to over-support and enable students. You want the just-right support. And being able to look at, we have an opportunity in our continuum to add a consultant teacher, and so that .5 consultant teacher service is attached right where it's needed in terms of students' IEPs and attached to the students. And we are, we're working through implementing that the first time and looking forward to learning from the successes there to grow it more programmatically. It is a good thing to have. Often, we think that more support is better, and that is not a supported idea. It is the right amount of support for a student is better, not necessarily more support. We want to be releasing responsibility to our learners so that they can develop agency. There's something called efficacy, that they believe they can achieve, and they do. So you definitely don't want to undersupport students, but you absolutely also do not want to oversupport students.
Thank you. Can we go to the middle?
Could I, I have a question on this slide too.
Yeah, yeah, please.
And then we'll go back. The AIS, the two sections of it. So that AIS would then support students from, who are in algebra up to pre-calculus? And then that one teacher has to support all those?
Yes, but that's kind of where the programming comes in because we wouldn't put, we wouldn't have seven students across five different subject areas in math in the same room together. It would be, depending on student need, it would be seven students in algebra. They receive their intervention. Then it's seven students in geometry, they receive their intervention. So it's part of that cyclical nature.
Okay, so it'd be, the scheduling would be mindful of the groupings?
Yes.
That's really helpful, thank you. What I'm trying to understand is the algebra. I know we offer algebra in eighth grade and in the high school. Is this only referring to the high school algebra sections?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
There are, there's a cohort of students coming up from eighth grade who, they take eighth-grade math instead of algebra. Scott could speak more to kind of how student, determine which students go into which course. But there are students who enter into eighth grade, enter into ninth grade having not yet taken algebra, and so that's approximately, this most recent year was approximately 60 students. And so 60 students, this year it was spread over four sections, and that made for nice class sizes of approximately 17. And we think, and to do three sections instead has us at an average class size of 50, which is still very much under the average and under the threshold of where things are starting to get on the larger side.
Thank you. Teresa, is there a question on AIS or something else?
The middle school?
Because I have another AIS question.
But I'm just, before we do that, just going back to the algebra, there's only two algebra classes though now, so.
This is not exhaustive of the whole department.
Oh, oh, oh.
This is just, it's just a sample of three, of three teachers. If I did it for the whole department, it would be seven, six or seven teachers, and it would get packed on the slide.
Got it, okay.
But this was for illustrative purposes more than anything else.
Okay.
I can just add that right now, we're running for eighth grade. We have six sections of math, four sections of algebra, two sections of math. So it would be two sections of students coming to the high school that would filter into the algebra classes in the high school.
Got it. Thank you.
I have a follow-up AIS question. So I really enjoyed learning about your conceptualization of the current AIS program, what you hope to do in the future, which was pretty exciting to see you thinking about this with all the data you're using to make these decisions. As I was going through this, so I was struck by, because when you start mentioning like the small class size for AIS in the high school, I'm like, yeah, that's true, interesting. And then I looked at the middle school, and I saw that they had, you know, these 20 different sections, and then some of those math sections are really small too. And I just wondered if the same approach you were looking at in the high school, you were doing that with the middle school, and I was just trying to understand the differences there.
Sure, so part of that has to do with the amount of FTE that is offered for that. So right now, we're doing all of that AIS with just 2.0 FTE.
Oh, wow.
So we had the full-time, last year, the board approved, we have a full-time AIS teacher for math. And that's why you'll see there's so many more such sections of math than there are of ELA. So the ask this year is to provide the full-time person in ELA to increase that support in ELA. So the full-time math teacher who's doing the interventions is really working through a fluid schedule and is working students in and out of those sections. So this is really just a snapshot of those sections. It's the data that was polled just the other day for this year. But I could say that any one of those sections probably had more or fewer students in it at any point throughout the school year. So we might have, if you take, let's say, section 10, that is one small section. It's two students right this moment, but that section could have had four students in it last month, where those students got support, they increased their skills, and then they moved back out of that level of support into more of a classroom teacher support.
Okay, it gets the FTE discussion, and this totals to two FTE?
This is a total of 2.0 FTE.
2.0, whereas the high school one that we're looking at is 3.2.
Three point, yeah.
That's helpful, thank you.
I have a question about the AIS teachers. So you're saying that the AIS teacher only does AIS? Or they're a math teacher that some sections do AIS?
So in math currently, we have both parts of that model. So we have the 1.0 math teacher who purely does intervention services. So she is full-time as an interventionist. She does all of our tier-two, all of our tier-three. Then we also have two sections that are a section that one math teacher does in sixth grade and one section that a teacher does in, that is really seventh grade, that provides some additional services for some of our students at that grade level.
So with the teachers that are, I'm sorry. So those teachers that are selected to do additional AIS in their schedule, how are those teachers selected? How are they reviewed and rated to ensure that their AIS interventions are being successful? And do you track the data for those students, not only for the full-time AIS teacher, but for the part-time AIS teachers?
Sure, so in terms of selection, we try to pick the teacher that is doing that grade level of mathematics. So the teacher that's doing mostly sixth grade, we try to provide that sixth-grade level of service, and for seventh grade, the seventh-grade level of service. We only have five teachers total within the department. One's doing completely, basically doing all of algebra, so you're really only talking to three other teachers to provide that level of service.
Let's say theoretically, I'm a sixth grader, and I'm doing poor in sixth-grade math. My AIS teacher is also my sixth-grade math teacher. Is it the same person?
Potentially, yes.
The same person? So the student isn't receiving services from someone else that could possibly differentiate or give a different strategy? If the student isn't aligning to that faculty member and can't grasp the concepts, they're sticking with the same person. So is AIS successful for those students that are still just having the same teacher?
So that's where it comes down to the MTSS team meeting and looking at students over the course of time. So if we're seeing a student that is in that class, that maybe that connection isn't happening, maybe that level of service isn't really connecting with that student. We also have the ability to switch over to the math intervention. We also have the ability to switch over to the math interventionist so that, that we could see whether that change makes a difference. So we have that fluid possibility within our schedule to be able to do that. And in terms of the data, that is something that we look at all the time, we're looking at our STAR data, we're looking at our classroom teacher scores, we're looking at how that, you know, student is performing, whether it be standardized or whether it be through, you know, content-related material, and looking at that in terms of progress monitor.
Something else?
Yeah, but other people. Um, I, I was just going to say, thank goodness, we're going to have an ELA interventionist at the middle school. It was kind of a black hole. And it's super necessary, so that is a highlight. Um, I, I'm not sure, is, an ELA teacher is currently providing AAS support since there isn't a dedicated one point O?
Yes, correct. Let, let me state the obvious and, you know, Scott, Amy, Andy, and here. I'm using the word optimize because we're getting efficiencies, we have to get more effective. As I've come to know, Scott, the last two years, he said, we've been doing okay in this whole realm in the middle school, we got to get a whole lot better. And as we go up to the high school, building on what's been good, we've got to get a whole lot better. So yes, we're trying to find a way to keep a budget under the tax cap and provide for all students. And what's laid out here in great detail is then to get better at it. Because I will be direct, we have been insufficient in providing the quality of support we need, and we're trying to get after that. So that's what's built into this budget. So these are all great questions from the board, and I'm encouraging us not to be shy to say, we, we are here about improving this. Faculty have been doing great work, I'm not talking about the faculty, I'm just saying, how do we support them to do that much better?
Yeah, I also, I'd like to raise the point that Melissa raised as well, you know, you look at the AAS sections in the middle school, the fact that we have interventionists dedicated to it, you know, we don't have that differentiation, that self-differentiation, those pathways that you have, and it starts in math a little early, but as you go later in high school, it's self-differentiating. And, you know, so the need is greater in the, in the middle school, which is why it's more of a dedicated approach.
So, yeah, I sort of want to shift gears a little bit, if that's okay.
Of course.
I guess I'm sitting and listening and thinking of people sitting here, listening, and it's a lot to digest. I'm trying to wrap my head around, I guess, the process as well as the content. And I think that a lot has changed since our last board meeting, and I really want to thank again and give enormous, to everybody, to the parents who spoke up, who were upset, who I have to say, basically, and for the most part, did so in an incredibly thoughtful and respectful way, both in comments here and in letters to the board compared to other times that people might have comments or write things to the board. I, I think it was really striking. And I think it really spoke to some real serious worries and concerns. And, and I think that not so much the board, I mean, I think we were concerned, but I think that Bill and Melissa Maureen and principals, everybody took it really seriously and took it to heart and really dug in to figure out, how can we, what can we do to make things better and more palatable under the circumstances? And the circumstances are that we have a limited amount of money, when we look at the full pie of money that we spend on the budget, the money that we have to even begin to play with for instructional needs is a really small piece of the pie. And I keep going back and I think I hawk Bill and the board, that we have to be sure that everybody understands what an FTE is, that this, that it's very easy to sit and think, oh my God, we're losing three teachers, how come we're not hiring three new teachers? And I get that, if I was a parent in the high school, I might, that might be what I, where I was digging my heels in. And I think we're working hard to explain what a, a person, the body of a person represents, and what one FTE means in terms of how we cover, what we can offer and how we cover everything that we need to be covering. And that part of why we don't hire three new people, just go out and hire, is that it's, that's tricky. It's incredibly expensive, and it's not just the salary, it's the benefits, it's, it's a huge expense. And if there's a way that we can meet the needs and look at some efficiencies, for example, what we're doing with AAS, and it's hard as a board member when you see that there's some classes where somebody's teaching three classes with two people in it. That gets a little bit hard to justify when we're trying to address our financial concerns. And I think that people are, have worked really hard to deal with what our needs are and how we can best serve students without sacrificing what we know and for the most part really love at each of the schools. And I think the concern at the high school was, wait a minute, like, we can't, we can't, you can't do this. And I think people heard that, and I hope that parents, I'm sure we'll have some comments, but, you know, I think we've worked hard to come to a place and I hope that there's going to be enough trust in the, in the system and that people can, that we're going to make this work.
Yeah, so, your work, our work actually gets quite complicated. As I, when I came into the public school world, after the independent school and Catholic school world, saying, what's all these decimals? And, and it's everywhere, but let me make it really simple. Since last week, went to the principals and say, we have to make sure we're going to deliver program opportunity and quality. Right? The opportunity electives meet as many as we can, and no high-performing district, school, high school ever offers everything in the book. So I'm glad you said that, Andy. And you as board members who are parents know that not everything is there. We're sort of bringing it back to what is the typical year, which let's call it this year. So we've worked hard to say, next year, can we offer the same range of courses, number of courses, with that slight caveat, all the APs back, all of that. So that's simple point one, we want to provide those opportunities that have been there this year at the high school next year. And then second, to do that in class sizes that are where we've been this year. So in a highly complex process to say, we need to staff up to do both of those things. And we, you know, worked it very, in great detail, thank you, Andy, thank you, Tara, thank you, backed up by Scott and Amy with Melissa and Maureen leaning in, and Andy working very great detail with department chairs and others, right up to midday today, on how do we provide that same level of opportunity within that same class size arrangement? So I mean, that's what we care about, and then how do you staff up for that? As opposed to, let's staff up, and where do we assign?
Right.
We get, we start with, we're student-centered in this process, student-centered.
But I think it also means taking people's concerns into account, concerns about class size, about electives, people saying, my kids want electives and they're unavailable, so they're in three study halls. I mean, we have to pay attention to those things. And also very much give a lot of credit to the, to the faculty and the department chairs, who I think and hope have been working with Andy particularly to kind of make all of this work and get buy-in from them because they are, they are it, you know, they're the, they, they're what do it. And, and I, you know, I always, I said this last time, I have some concerns in some of the departments, more social studies and English, I think, in terms of teachers and class size and class load, in terms of the extra work that it demands, the amount of extra time it demands when you're teaching a large class of, you know, juniors or seniors or, they're tenth graders. So, yeah, I think, anyway.
Okay, good, thank you.
Jerry, thank you.
I have a few more questions and then we can ju, jump in. Um, Andy, can we go to slide eleven? Because I'm, I, this is sort of on that question of FTE. You talk about like plus addition, and I just wasn't sure what the addition, the point O seven addition, like, what is that? Where's it come from?
Sure, so in the social studies department, that is a, that is a hire. That is, we are posting for, for an, an extra position.
Oh.
That's, that is, that is a new hire, that is not hiring at a full one point O, but it's posting on Ola and, and the other networks to say, we're hiring and, and this is the position that we're looking for.
And what is that position? It's an ELA, it's a core ELA teacher that is kind of part-time?
Sure, sure, so, so in social studies and in math, we will be putting a posting together for, for, in social studies, it'll, it'll be a point nine because the, that's the addition plus the peer leadership, which is showing up with, with, with another teacher taking on the peer leadership piece. So that's a reduction in their teaching capacity, so we need to, to hire somebody to cover point nine of a teaching position, which is an interesting number to post for, a point nine, but, I, I mean, we have some, some creative ideas about, about how to utilize staff in that way, namely, we still need substitute teachers, right? And so, the person would be hi, would be full-time with us, point nine of their time and salary would be teaching in the social study department, and point one would be as a substitute teacher, if we have somebody who's absent, right? So it, it, from a kind of budgeting perspective, it, it looks pretty weird, but we're, but we make it work when it comes to the lived experience of individual humans.
And, I was not to interrupt you, so these are, these are new hires you're posting, but isn't it harder to find great teachers who are part-time? So here's my next question, this is going to involve you two, Scott, and I'm getting a little crazy here, but I see that you have postings too, is there any way to like merge some of them so there are six of you twelve and we can get some great full-time people and then bring some of that great teaching and learning into the AOKs in the middle school, like, think about it in these different ways?
Uh, we, that, yes, those are ongoing conversations that Scott and I have, there are instances where, where it lines up and there are instances where it doesn't exactly line up. But the, the realities of hiring are real, right? Trying to find excited, highly qualified teachers who are, who are looking for a, a full-time position, let alone a part-time position, can, can be a little bit tricky. And with the kind of financial realities that we're in right now, this is where we're looking. And if this does not bear fruit, then we come back to the drawing board and back to the table and, and say, we weren't able to find somebody, what do we do? And, and we roll up our sleeves and figure it out. But to, to, to just kind of, the projected postings for the, for the high school will be a point nine posting for the social studies department, it'll be a point four posting for math, and the point six posting for ELA. My, my understanding, and this is again, new for me, is that because it's an internal candidate, it functions a little bit differently. Melissa Maureen, if, if you want to confirm or, or correct me on that?
Yes.
Yes.
I think the person.
We can't hear you.
No, I think, as Melissa alluded to before, there's an internal candidate that is currently teaching point six. She's split currently between English and another department, and then we would have to backfill the other department where she's coming from, if she were to come over, or he took her over and sit in the.
I know you can't speak about specific personnel, so it gets hard to explain.
Similarly, point two has, you're seeing, it sits there, up there visually in the ELA, because that's where it lives currently, so that is still being allocated for, we're running a process right now to figure out to fill the HAS, where does that sit, which department, so it doesn't have an impact on the program and the offerings.
So can I ask a question just specifically about this? Because if I was just looking at this, I think, well, you know, they're still reducing, the reductions are still in ELA, social studies and math. So, in math, let's take that, is the, we're reducing it a point six math, but we're having a point four addition, but we're able to reduce the math because of the AIS efficiencies?
So I, I mean, I really would urge us to, think about outputs and outcomes, outputs and outcomes. We built this from that end back in to say, if we want to have the same degree of course offerings, and we want to keep the class size where it is, within this strict governor, if we didn't have, if we go up the tax cap, we're not having this conversation. This budget's done and in. If the voters would go over sixty percent in the village to support it, going above the tax cap, that's where we are. Right? So again, it's saying, let's think about outputs and outcomes, then what are the inputs required to get there? The inputs, and it's hard work, but looking at AAS, keeping that quality service going to get it better, we can then get the efficiencies, and it's very difficult to look at just from an input standpoint and make sense of it. I would say, you've heard the principal of the high school has, he's only a deeply truthful man in his career and life to say, these are the offerings we will have this year and next year, the same. And any principal in any private, independent, big public high school anywhere is going to say to you, we never offer everything in that course of study book. Right? So there's always a little we don't. And we've worked really hard to say, again, outputs in class sizes that are where they are now, and if we can look to even bring down that upper end, we will. So again, very simple, if we just focus on, I don't understand all these inputs, which are great questions, we're looking at the wrong end of it. We're saying, look at the outputs and the outcomes. Because all the great concerns, complaints, brought with great respect, and at this point, I know everybody went to the mic, I know everybody wrote, and they wrote with great respect, their concern is, what's going to be before my high school? And we're saying, we are going to bring you the same before your high school with a modified set of inputs. But please, look at those outcomes and look at those outputs.
Davey, you have a question? Yeah, about the point, the point nine, what is the dollar and cents difference between that point nine and a, and a one point O? I know, is, does the point nine get insurance and all that?
Yeah, yeah, and I think, again, I think depending on if the peer leadership remains in the social studies, I mean, there could be another conversation about that. Because I think, right now, as Melissa said, there's a piece of it that, as the interviews, and I think the last time, I probably made it too confusing the way I had it all over the place, but some of that is connected to other programming. So if, I would, I don't know, I want to speak out of term, but I would think that if it ends up peer leadership being retained in the social studies department, we then may come back with a modify, like, maybe then we do, if you're having a hard time finding a point nine, I think that's what Andy was alluding to, then we could post it for a one point O. And to your question, it would, depending on the candidate, could be about fifteen thousand dollars or so. It's not as significant, but part of it was because initially not knowing, say if that point two for peer leadership, let's pretend another department, individual picked up in another department, then that point two would no longer be connected to social studies, it could be connected to mathematics. You know, if a teacher internally took it. And that's similar to the, the HAS, the point two there as well, I think that's what Melissa was saying. And then in terms of additions at the, there's another, with this switch of that point six individual to English, that will require us to backfill for social, excuse me, special education there too. So I think there will be some matches where maybe it'll be a posting of, you know, full-time math slash special ed teacher, I'm just using that like to your recruiting question.
Yeah, yeah.
And which is not a, I mean, again, and I think Andy had said that we'll do the posting, and then if, if it does, if they're not finding qualified folks, then we will have to come back and either make some other, you know, we'll, we'll figure out how then we'll take care of that need, I think that's similar.
Beyond the recruitment, it's, if you, this is a point nine and it remains a point nine, if that was me as a teacher, I would be looking for a one point O elsewhere. So now we're hiring someone that's really only going to be here part-time, and then the students are not, you know, building community with that faculty member, they're not learning, they're not becoming part of, part of the Hastings school system. So now we're going to backfill another point nine and a point nine. You know, there are ways, you're saying, to do it, but I'm concerned with, point nine is just, is so below the.
Yeah, we, we, you know, we have point eights and they are here fully and all the rest, so we've, that, that's in our mix, and it's been here for a long, long time. But I think, again, I'd ask us to focus on our commitment to the outputs and where we are, and then also, as we go into the process, if we need to have some flexibility and some mixing and matching, we'll do that. But if we were just to go right, right, right out and say, let's worry solely about input at one point O times three, we can't afford to do that unless we make some other cuts. You know, we, and, and we're going to have to go elsewhere in the budget to make some cuts. So that's where the last two weeks, we've been working really hard on that to say, again, can we get what you as a board want, rightly so, our, our high school staff and families then, and students want, by again, looking again, what's it going to take to provide those outcomes and outputs? We feel we're doing it here, and in every hiring process, there's going to be moments where mixing and matching and sorting through how to get it to best happen. Also, we have an internal candidate who's excellent, so I'd ask us to move off that topic. All right? So I, because I don't want that person commented on if we could help it anymore.
Yeah, absolutely, but I, I'm sorry, I have to bring this up because I thought you made a really good point. If it's a fifteen thousand dollar difference for a full-time person, then I would say maybe it's time to look at athletics, look at other places. I know last time we talked about different clubs and activities, because I do think that we have a strong commitment to academics and sports, but I think these are things to revisit, because a full-time hire is a full-time hire, and that's a big deal, and we want to have the best candidate possible.
I, I would imagine.
I, I would imagine that there might be some parents sitting here who are saying, why can't we have a full-time hire in ELA when the middle school has, you know, a bunch of additions? So can we talk about the additions? I, I'm happy, right, but can we talk about them?
Sure.
So, so there's an additional class in fifth grade, right, to help class, break down class size and to match what is coming up from Hillside?
Correct.
Right? ELA, MTSS, absolutely necessary. I, I would love to hear about the executive functioning, I know in the budget, it's a hundred and fifty thousand allocated for that. I, I, I love the idea of it, but I'd like to hear more about it. I, I'm sorry to say, but I have two middle, current middle schoolers, and some of the AOKs and facts are triggering for me. And so, I don't, why, I, I'm sure that you were very intentional in thinking about this and thinking about how to implement it, can something be traded out, something like that? And I know we need to build our testing center, because we are not at our best with accommodating students with testing accommodations, and we need to do that. It's the law, and they need it. But can you talk about the executive functioning, hundred and fifty K? And I don't mean that in a critical way, I'm curious, and it'd be great to understand so that we can, like, choose to get behind you, get behind it, and like, you know, or to say, like, do, do we, do we really need that?
So I can answer that in a couple of ways. First of all, I didn't put the number on.
You didn't?
The hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that comes from the business office in terms of determining how much money is allocated to certain positions.
Okay, 'cause if that's just a one point oh, that's not necessarily a hundred and fifty K, right?
Yeah, so I think, I think sometimes with, when we see certain, well, it's kind of fluid between different hires, but occasionally, especially at the secondary level, sometimes we'll either put a higher amount than like a K six teacher, just, and really, not understanding the skill set that they were looking for, was it somebody with specialized background in like special education, and maybe another subject, like a person who may have two licenses or something of that, you know, 'cause it was something like a new, a new course with, I think, looking for a person without like really strong skill set, similar to probably the exploring equities hire, will then also require like a highly specialized, it wouldn't be like a new teacher, most likely, similar to the MTSS, typically they're a little bit ha, a few more years of experience for them. So again, not knowing it was a new program, and, and thinking that the person would likely potentially need two certifications of some sort, and that was the assigned. But, you know, what, what typically then happens is, when they post, you post for a range, and depending on the candidates, sometimes a position that we may have posted in our budget book may have assigned a lower number to, in actuality, they get hired at a higher salary, and then somebody else may be brought in lower, because we have to put the range of salaries we're posting on, so, and sometimes we have to go back out when we can, sometimes we'll say, that was too low, can you repost it? And then we bump it up. So it, it's just to allow for a little bit of that, and again, new position, not quite sure.
I, we're, we're all wondering.
Yeah.
I, I know it.
So, so now, looking at executive functioning as a, as a course. So first and foremost, I agree with you, one hundred and ten percent, when I arrived here, one of the first questions I asked was, what's an AOK? Right? And I think you need to know that first of all, in next year's master schedule, there are no AOKs, they have been eliminated, okay? Every student will take courses that are not optional, they will take a set program of courses that are expected for each grade level as we move through. So, looking at that, the question then became, through my discussions, through the creation of the FMS kind of action plan, what are the skills, what are the deficiencies, what are the things we're proud of, what are the things that we feel are lacking? And some of the things that rose to the top, one of them was executive functioning, the ability of our students to actually function in life, to have the skills necessary as they progress through school, in order to be successful both in high school and beyond. And I think that was one of the pushes that we saw. Another one was an increase in STEAM and technology, things like coding and engineering, and that's the next step in the process, we see it built into this budget in fifth grade, we added back in technology, we added back in, we added in a STEAM program for fifth grade to make that connection to Hillside, to continue that forward. So this is really that, that movement forward. Now, in terms of not doing a program like this, we can definitely discuss that, if that's the wish of the board, but what we need to realize is that, that one point oh is necessary in order to fill kids' schedules.
Right.
So whether we do executive functioning or something else, I need a one point oh in order to fill sixth and seventh grade schedules, otherwise, we're gonna end up with study halls.
'Cause I have ideas!
Okay.
We have ideas!
I would say...
Improv!
You know?
But like, no, but seriously, like, I'm looking at that point six science, I, I keep harping on this, and I'm like, is there any way we could make it a full, and then that could be shared with the high school? And then, that, that full executive functioning teacher could either be part of that point six, or bring in the math, so that we could have astronomy, and, and really rich classes for our middle schoolers, archaeology, maybe some of that could be shared with the high school, just to really add that enrichment, and, and part of the reason I'm so passionate about this, is I wasn't executive functioning coached, back in the days when I was a middle school teacher, and I spent a lot of time as a sixth grade teacher, teaching executive functioning. And I know in a lot of schools, in their fourth grade and fifth grade, in those transition years, and that's why I'm looking at you too, Amy, there's like built in there, so that there's executive functioning to help you get into fifth grade, and I feel like, I don't know, not to mention, but Ms. Ficaro did a great job with that with my son, and then seeing that in fifth grade too, I remember that in Ms. Kavanaugh's class at least as well. And maybe building that up there, and then taking this one to be more of sort of that academic enrichment, because you're right, those AOKs are not particularly exciting, and it would be so wonderful to have robotics and really build these things up, and then maybe if we could take some of that extra, share it with the high school.
Can I, can I chime in a little bit? A little contrary. You know, one of the things, I, I don't wanna see the good become the enemy of the perfect. And I think, these are all very good ideas, I agree with them, but I think they're also process-based ideas of moving these, these buildings forward and moving them into one K-12 structure. Because Andy Claman brought up a very important term a couple minutes ago, fiscal constraints, about how we got to this place, how did we get here? It's not because of state funding, it's not because of an unwillingness for this community to spend, you know, really, how we got here was the failed budget in twenty-two, twenty-three, okay? That was, in many ways, a non-controversial budget, it was tax cap compliant. The big spend in that budget was that, that was the initial bond payment, so it bumps up the budget, bonds go flat, bonds are, payments are flat, but when they first come online, they jump up the spending. So, we came to the community in twenty-two, twenty-three with a non-controversial, but it was a large increase, but it was tax cap compliant, and that budget went down. And we came back with a budget that was five hundred grand less. That five hundred grand saved the average taxpayer fifteen bucks a month, something like that. And, but that hole, because our current budget by state law, I'm sorry, our next budget by state law is always arch, trajectoryed off our current budget. So, Maureen, 'cause we've talked about this, that five hundred thousand dollar hole, as recently as twenty-two, twenty-three, what does that look like in current, where, where would we be budget-wise?
Well, first, the budget was actually one point one million dollars under the cap, allowable cap this year, 'cause our original cap was six hundred, yeah, so, we, our first budget was six hundred thousand below the allowable increase that year, which again, most districts always love you right to the cap.
Okay, can I, can I just add a point?
Yeah.
Special point, because, especially for trustees who weren't here at the time, in New York State, in the financing law, let's say, because we had a bond payment coming online, we had a unique opportunity to raise our cap additionally above the two percent New York State limit, correct? So, to carry on, because, so what...
Yes, so, so if we, depending on whatever we focus on, if we had limited the legal max, and it was a pass budget, that's one point one million dollars each year that we would've collected, in addition to what we currently have, right? So that's about three million, if we use the failed budget and then the reduced...
The five hundred grand.
Yeah, that five hundred, five hundred and fifty thousand, it's about one point six million dollars of additional monies we would have today.
Right, so, we would not be where we are, making these very tough calls and very tough decisions, if that budget had passed, so I just wanna be very careful, we should absolutely be aspirational, but from my perspective, if the, and what I'm seeing, and I want some more detail, but, if it was being made as whole as possible in a tax cap compliant universe, if Hillside is staying the great school that it is, and if FMS is getting the supports that parents have been asking for for a decade in this town, for me, that's, that's something that I can absolutely support, and it does make me nervous that we, we should not make the, the good the enemy of the perfect.
I hear what you're saying, Alex, but I, I am going to push back a little, because I, I'm going to say that I am deeply impressed, I'm grateful, for all of the excellent work of our school leaders and our district staff. I'm just saying, let's play with the numbers and look at them in different and creative ways. I think we have some great ideas here, but I think we can look at them and play with them and stretch them in different ways within our monetary constraints, and I think that's what the conversation is here, and I think it's important to have. I also think this goes back to is, what is the mission and vision of this district, right? Where are we putting our money, time and energy? And I think we've heard from parents again and again these past two, three weeks, that they want it in academics, they really want it strong, they want those middle school and high school classes to be meaningful for the students, that's why we heard that applause when there was a discussion of the AOK. And I think we're having this wonderful conversation, I actually am loving this conversation, and I feel so grateful that our high school and middle school and elementary school leaders are here, to think as a team, this is amazing, right? We have our elementary, middle and high school team all here, talking about our school and what's best for it. So I'm really grateful that we're having this conversation, we're thinking about it, and we're playing with these academic ideas, and thinking how we can make K through twelve a stronger unit, maybe bring executive functioning into the middle, elementary school and high school, make that stronger, think about how we can bring interesting science and social studies across the spectrum. So I guess, I'm feeling pretty invigorated by this conversation and hopeful, and that that we can do this because we have such grateful people here, within our financial constraints.
So I would, I, I appreciate that, I would just urge her, I would urge it, I'd urge us to think, I'd urge us to think in phases here, because I think, you know, what's going on here is, this, the FMS plan reaches back over eighteen months, now it's trying to apply resources to that, there might be some modifications within the edges, then it's saying, how might that really blend in for, with the high school? But I think, is there major questions, what can we get done now? What then very specifically do we commit to over the next year? Because I've seen districts at these very moments, start to say, let's put this here, that there, this here, that there, and it's, and when the, and then you end up with something that isn't as coherent or as well-planned as you want. Both for that very core issue, 'cause we went off and said, academically, socially, emotionally, in terms of success, again, how do we have those out, outputs and outcomes we want, at this point, within this budget constraint? What can we come to later? I mean, at the high school, Andy Claman and Tara working with the faculty, they're only just beginning. How they connecting with Scott on these things, they're only just beginning. So all I would simply say is, what's realistic between now and April twenty-second to be a very well-designed, coherent approach, which I think we have here, and then say, second, what then is next? And for the board, say, administration, principal leaders, we're challenging you as to what is next, we couldn't get to it now, but what is next? Because if we go into substantially shift right now, I'm not sure we end up with that committed purpose to academic and social emotional growth.
Yeah, I mean, I have to agree with you, there was a lot of moving parts, I would say, to get, and a lot of iterative, iterative discussions around, could we move this, could this go here, and it's gonna have a big ripple effect? I'm not sure that I'm a fan of the executive functioning, I know it, it kind of unlocks the schedule, I understand that's the importance of it, to allow that free period to be across the entire kind of universe of kids. But I think there would be a huge ripple effect to starting, you know, entertaining, like, could we move this, and it would kind of create, I think, more issues, but could we not have a hundred and fifty for the executive function, to have like a portion of that, I'd rather see that not be the full FTE, and, and just add it to the, to the one that you have as point nine, or, you know, kind of put it in the academic, a portion of it, and see if that could work.
That's what I do.
I, I have a question about the executive functioning as well, is this on? Yes?
Yeah.
Could you go to the next slide, the other middle school slide, that has the, yes? So, we have, in the expansion of academic programming, right, we have executive functioning, we have dedicated teacher for exploring equity, these seem like two very large pieces of an advisory program to me. What I'm not seeing here, Bill just mentioned, is SEL, which is another big piece of advisory program, PGC, peer group connection, like those pieces, restorative practices, which we hear a lot about, but we haven't been provided a lot of evidence of restorative practices having. These five areas, instead of an executive functioning class, encompass an advisory program with different units, where students can learn executive functioning, they could learn SEL skills, they could learn restorative practice, they can learn these in different modules throughout the year, and I know we're not like throwing ideas to change things up, but, but I'm, I'm seeing like, hire a dedicated teacher here, hire a dedicated teacher here, but an advisory program that can be run with consolidation of staff.
So we, we, we couldn't agree more, we can't get there right now. I think, you know, Andy's come in very much interested in advisory, I think Scott has that same interest, particularly Andy comes to that, that's something we have to do in close agreement with, with the teachers, 'cause it's also gonna require a significant shift in the scheduling. Andy, why don't you speak a little to, because you're spot on, Dick, we have the same point of view, and that's why I come back to this phasing, what can we get done now, and then be explicit with the board, what we're gonna continue to work on with this excellent team?
Sure. Dave, we're simpatico on that, the, it's really the opportunity there for what we could do with an advisory program, the sky's the limit in terms of social emotional learning, in terms of financial literacy, in terms of the work around equity, in terms of executive functioning, in terms of, in terms of college awareness, and as it stands right now, you know, thinking about how to get those same pieces mapped backwards without the kind of structures within the collective bargaining agreement, that would allow for kind of a widespread advisory program, where you've got groups of twelve to fifteen students, and, and teachers across the different subject areas are able to provide for that. I, I, I know that that's one of the pieces at work when, when the district is talking with HTA around the negotiations, but I, I think that one of the things that Scott's working to do with, with this is to identify some of those high leverage pieces that would exist within an advisory, and get it rolling in the absence of the flexibility around staffing that, that comes through the collective bargaining work.
We are, we are, it, it is a teacher contract here, I mean, I'm just saying, I, I know we're, everybody's exhausted, this was a lot of work. I do think it is the responsibility of the board to engage in a robust conversation and ask questions, and not just say, okay, great, thank you.
Let me, no, the questions are great, I'm just trying to structure those into what's now, what's coming. And, and so, 'cause, as I say, everyone who works for me, you have, the board asks the questions, we honor and respect that.
Right.
I'm just trying to say, is those, as we move into then, where does that land in terms of what's happening now, what do we have later? An advisory is a wonderful idea, we've had that commitment, that's why I knew Andy would be right there, I mean, when he's working, we want that, rightly so, you do that agreement with your teachers, because of the nature of contractual time and all the rest, which we deeply respect. And that's the other part of this, we wanna try and have the resources to get to a reasonable outcome with, with our free bargaining units, and that's before us. Part of that discussion could be, how do we address an advisory that gets into fundamentally, fundamental scheduling, and fundamental arrangement of the math you're seeing here in terms of the decimals? Who's assigned where, when, relative to the other, other work? And so that's where it's, to me, it's an important concept, we might be to get it if this coming negotiation, not sure, but that's something we do collectively, we may, but we can also work on other ways. Let me be clear, I mean, Scott is managing a... a stopgap advisory now purely for meeting state minutes. It's a stopgap. None of us are pleased with it, but it's to meet the state requirement for minutes. And that's why we have a deeper commitment to get to a real, meaningful advisory.
Thank goodness. My, yes. My, my son describes it as detention to my younger daughter. It's, I think what, what is being, you know, proposed for the middle school is robust and will elevate the experience of the students. It's, it's just tricky, you know, when it results in imbalance. It, it, you know, and you know that. It's like, that's, that's just sort of the public sentiment that we're really investing in the middle school. And is there any place that can be cut back so we can do full-time hires in the high school is the question?
I think it's a thrust. It's like, where can we do? In the middle school, like there's just the beauty of a full-time hire, the attractiveness, the pool you have when you hire full-time, both for the middle school and the high school, and how to work towards that, I think, would be a, a charge. Just a quick question. You mentioned a dedicated EE teacher, and you said like, different people are filling that role this year. And I have two sixth graders in EE. So what does that look like for the future?
What's EE?
Exploring equity. So it's not a new hire? Because I didn't see a new hire for EE.
So it, it is one of the new hires. Yes. But they, we're shifting staff around in order to make this happen where we're hiring somebody else. So right now, we've got three different people teaching exploring equity, one for six, one for seven, one for eight. And the desire is to create a, a single program that's taught by one person in order to create a consistent kind of vertical articulation between all of the things that are happening and all the topics that are covered within that program.
So would that be a social studies or an English teacher?
So we have gone back and forth in terms of this because-
Having Ben, someone who taught this type of stuff, I'm like, ooh, fascinating.
We, we really, we really, we want to, we've posted it as open to all certification areas.
Oh, interesting. Okay.
With the intent of trying to find the best possible person.
Oh, that's really exciting.
We didn't want to, we, and we spoke to our attorneys about this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
In terms of certification requirements.
And then it'll be linked.
But we wanted to make sure that it potentially could be somebody with a counseling background. It could be somebody with a social studies background. There could be somebody with a, a CTE certification that is in common to this area, that maybe is coming with a lot of experience in this kind of area. And we didn't want to limit ourselves to that. So that's why we posted it as being a kind of an open cert. And then we said we would see, in, let's say it is a social studies teacher, then we would hire them as a social studies teacher. If it's an English teacher, then it's an English teacher. But we didn't want to necessarily kind of close our pool to really good candidates for that.
That's great. That's helpful. Thank you.
In order to make it, make it the best possible person.
Bill, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Yeah. More of an umbrella question, but could you or you and Maureen just tell us, could you or you, you and Maureen maybe just tell us if, what you know about, if there's any impact, what the impact would be of whatever's going on at the Department of Education?
I, I'd urge us just to set that to the side. I mean, right now, we have about $600,000 to come into the district that you could claim is tied to the federal rule, like or not what's happening. I'm just going right down the middle on this one. At this point, I'm just being factual.
Okay, that's all I want.
Where, why the situation happened that we're in, I, I just have to be factual. I'm not being political. I'm being factual. So the situation we have, we have about $600,000 and change that comes to us. A significant amount of that is IDA, special ed money.
Okay.
Like or not, what's happening in Washington, there's already very strong statements that that money will be protected. There are massive interests to protect that money, as there should be. So I think right now, we just, I would urge us all to set that to the side.
So it doesn't sound like it will have a huge impact on us anyway, probably.
It might be a block grant to the state.
No, yeah. And where lands we'll see, and we have our eyes-
I'm just thinking of it in terms of the budget and the bond and-
Yeah, but, yeah, but on any of these things, we, we have escaped, we're going up a mountain, we can always escape out.
Okay.
All right. But I think decisions made now, because of what we think's happening in Washington, I, I, I'm not saying this to you, Jody, it'd be a huge mistake. Full attention, you know, in deep conversations with fellow-
I really just wondered like numbers.
In deep conversations with fellow supers, we're in deep conversations at state level, you know, so.
Thank you.
Yep, that's, okay.
Can we do public comment?
Well, we, that's what we're interested in.
There's a very important information we should really need to get into the public, to be honest. So are there any other questions for principals?
Thank you so much.
So let me put a point on it, because going to my idea of phasing or not, what, what I will do is, after this meeting, I'm going to come back, not tonight, don't worry, Tori. You have buildings, you have buildings to run. You have, I saw Amy's face. You mean tonight, Bill? No, we, I think we will look at that question of-
He was going to sleep in his office.
The mix and match across the middle school and high school with this idea of phasing. And, and come back and say, in this immediate phase, this is still what we're bringing you, because please, we worked hard that the high school is not giving up anything next year. We're finding a way to let the middle school get to the growth it needs to, because I've heard that intensively for four years, while holding the high school strong, allow the middle school to come along. But I'm hearing good questions here, specific ones. You know, we will engage in those and we'll update the board, if that's fair.
Thank you.
And think again, sorry to repeat, where we are in this immediate phase, but then say, where might we be coming down the road, which could include advisory ideas, et cetera. Is that fair? Because I, we take the question seriously. All right?
And I just wanted to add one thing. I personally want to thank all of the principals. And we have a very, very strong systemic approach here, you know, and I'm talking about the individuals sitting at this table, meet regularly, are lockstep, are thinking K-12 all the time. And I want to publicly recognize that and say thank you, because change happens over time. Special ed has been a key player in all of this and thinking about expanding continuum and making sure that we are looking systemically. And where those entry points are for doing those expansions are also critically important. So I am very proud to work with a team that works so well together. And I'm very grateful to all of you. Thank you.
Can I also add, just Laura Sullivan couldn't be here tonight because she's sick, but also special ed did a heavy lift on this. And also frankly, the department chairs as well, be willing to really get granular and get real with what, what can happen. So thank you, thanks to the entire, the entire district, really. So thank you. All right. So are we gonna, thank you all. We're gonna move on?
I think the principals, I will allow to leave, please. I'd encourage you to leave. You have buildings running in the morning. I would ask the boards forbearance, because there is a couple of financial updates, we'll do it efficiently, that, you know, need to know from what, where we are. And then, then you have a question board about whether you go on a public comment at that point or relative to your bond update. But I think we should at least efficiently-
Yeah, well, I think, right, because you just have to see how the pieces connect, right? Because we did have to increase our allocation out of reserves to balance this budget. And I, this is just a clarifying part for the salaries, just so people know. When we put $150,000, that's assuming someone coming in with about an $85,000 salary, because the benefit package, health insurance alone is going to be over $40,000 this year. So just to kind of give you some context, and then retirement system payments and all the rest. So it's, it really isn't that like large of a salary in the grand scheme of things. That's bringing in somebody maybe like a seven-year person, six, seven years in the system with maybe some additional training. And so even a lot of the, what we budgeted for the new hires was really assuming newer staff, where else the numbers would have been much higher. But just so you know, that's not just the salary, it's, it's all in.
What was the increase in healthcare?
Almost 10%. And it's been almost 10% the last few years. And they've already told us for next year, and I'll have that in my slide deck, because we're in a consortium of health insurance with like 26 other districts in Southern Westchester. And when we went to the meeting and they've been, they basically said, not only do we have to increase this year, we'll have to increase at the same rate, somewhere between 9 to 10% again next year. But our health insurance premiums for the district are, are like 8 million dollars, because that includes current employees and about 240 retirees that are still, some of which are still on like, until they're 65, that's their primary. And then after they're 65, where they're supplementary, supplemental. And then we also have to reimburse Medicare premiums to retirees. So like, it's a, it is a, and that's, that 8 million doesn't include those other payments. And then we thankfully have 100 employees who waive benefits, which saves us about 3 million dollars a year. So if those folks start jumping on our, like, so health insurance is very expensive. It's not unique to Hastings, but that is one of the major budget challenges in the last three years we've had. Because three years ago, it was only about 3 or 4% increase. They held the rate during COVID. And they're attributing it to it, like all health insurance, to the increase of like delayed surgeries, delayed healthcare through COVID, coupled with just everything, you know, becoming much more expensive. So that, again, we know already that not only for this year, and this, this is where in this budget, so the board is required not only to look at the current budget, and we do this every year, it's a requirement, you need to look at the five-year budget. We did, I showed it to you in January, because you need to understand, like, what decisions you're making, like, are they, are they sustainable? What will that require in the future? You know, what does that mean for next year? How much? So we're going to not only go through the changes, but that's the part, because again, that is primarily, you know, one of the, the things that the board has to grapple with, of course. Okay. So again, this is just an update to where we are. The new budget to budget, with, what we basically did was, and we'll show it, we, we did increase salaries and for the restorations of positions. And with restoration of some positions that also required, then it would kick in a benefit package for, if we were doing something that was more than part-time. And we made those adjustments to the budget. That brought our budget to budget change up to 4.73. As, as we said earlier, we know we can't touch the tax cap limit, because we already currently were at it at 3.66. And again, you know, as I, as I explained before, although it's a negative tax rate increase, that does not mean that people will not have a tax rate increase. So we just want, we're not trying to suggest that here, and we have language to clarify that. The budget overview. So basically, what we ended up doing, and this is just again a snapshot of our budget, we, we ended up increasing our transfer out of our retirement reserve, but, reserve by another $150,000. So currently this year, we're using 1.8 million dollars worth of our savings reserves to bringing in as a revenue to offset the, the shortage between what we're allowed to levy, what the other revenues had generated, and then to close that budget deficit. But just again, as an example, and we've spoken about it multiple times, our budget to budget was 2.8 million dollars. And our allowable tax cap was only 1.7 million. Now thankfully, and this is somewhat connected to your question, Jody, with the federal government and everything else. I mean, the state, Governor Hochul is, and the legislators are, you know, pretty confident that the money that they're getting from the feds to give it to us, that it's there. So we are not, we are showing what the, when the increase in state aid there, thankfully, because if that were not, if that was even flat, we would have another half a million dollars to kind of grapple with right now. So as you can see, you know, our budget to budget is, is increasing by a certain level. And of course, some of that is with some of the new things we're adding. And, and then the tax levy limited, limited us to 1.7 million. So we did then increase the 1, the $150,000. And we also pulled back the point, we're not increasing the science at the high school. So it was a combination of adding 150,000, the fund balance, and then pulling back the initial increase of science to the high school that was in the original budget. And then Amy and others kind of outlined some of the other changes, such as not having permanent subs at every building, like reducing the numbers of some of those part-time positions. And we felt comfortable then moving forward with the restorations. Again, these things, we've gone over before, and just in terms of the state. The state level, I think it's always, although I, I feel confident we'll get our money next year based upon the information we're getting from Albany, I think if, when, when that, the state aid is flat, or it goes down, that's revenues we have to make up. So those are things we always keep our eye on. And again, this is just summarizing what I just said. This is the piece in which I just want you to understand, and I think it goes earlier to, you know, the really great conversation you were having amongst yourselves about if we were to increase this, which I think, you know, when, once this budget is finally, when you adopt it, there may be some tweaks that we do make between then and the adoption, or the night of the adoption. There's other things beyond what we discussed tonight that between now and the opening of schools, happens every year, such as, we have annual reviews under, that are currently occurring, especially at the elementary school where the students are younger. We have not really accounted for if there's any changes in the services those children may need. So, and when I say changes in services, I'm primarily talking about like teacher one-to-ones, one-to-one TAs. Similar to teachers, although teachers aides, quite frankly, do not salary-wise, they make very little, low salaries, they do get benefits. So even with a one-to-one aide, if two, one or two children ends up needing another aide, we could find ourselves needing another $150,000. And that, that's every year. And for the most part, you know, so again, these are things that, you know, our current budget really is just based upon what, what we understand today. Not, not accounting for those type of changes, because if we needed to, that would have required us to kind of tighten things up even a bit more. If, if something like that were to happen, we may have to consider, you know, just looking at other areas of the budget to kind of scale back, scale down, potentially if we get some additional revenues, that could help offset that. But this is just, as much as sometimes things seem, oh, we can just say add back 20,000, but there are other unknowns that may also occur, right? So I think that's why it does, you know, that may be one that the board feels that they want to explore further. I'm just using that as an example, because I think that was a very good one, Dave, like to say, should we restore that? Is that, you know, would that make more sense? But it, it is sometimes where we do sometimes think about all these other unknowns that we have to consider. Again, with that, again, annual reviews. And the other thing that could potentially happen, we, if there's children that currently we have slated to be in district next year, and suddenly they're placed out based upon whatever occurs there, not only then do you have a tuition, you have a bus. And as I've explained ad nauseam during the transportation part of our budget, one bus for a student, unless we're able to share that, and depending on, especially with child IP's, they may have specialized bussing, it's $100,000 for one bus, no matter if it's going to Irvington, if they're the single rider. Not, usually we have shared rides there, but that, that's the impact of, of, of one extra bus. I can tell you, and I'll get to that, because this is kind of a, a lot of things for you to consider. Again, we just talked about the bond vote. And this is more to do less with what's included and more to do with the, if let's say the, the bond were to go down, it, it does cost money to run a vote, right? So then we would have to run another vote next year, which we don't have money in the budget for. But we still do at least have a good 12 million dollars outside of some of the other work that we think is a, well, is a priority that does have to be addressed. So then, you know, how, like delaying that work would then, that would put a lot of pressure on the 26, 27 budget, because then the timing of getting authorization may require us to, to budget some repairs then in 26, 27, because we can't wait for that 12 million dollars or 1 million of that 12. So again, there's a lot of timing. It may seem not impactful, but it is. There's always an impact to those type of things. You know, Amy didn't speak to it earlier. Initially, when we started our budget process, she would have, you know, because the last few years, sometimes five extra students in a particular grade will then elevate class sizes at Hillside. We had initially considered, there was a, a proposal at least from the Hillside, based on projected enrollments. They wanted to increase two, two sections at Hillside. We did not increase any sections at Hillside. So it's a likelihood we'll have higher classes at Hillside. Now, I don't want anybody now to, but, but I mean, just in terms of what if we do see an influx in a particular grade level. And I've seen it, you know, you get 12 kids in the first grade. Why, you know, we don't, sometimes can't project all of those kind of things that occur. Then we may have to add a section. I mean, anyone who's been on the board for a while knows that we've had to do that. But right now, we don't have really, you know, all these things, one thing could trigger a need to shift something else. Again, out of district busing, I found out ardsely, I had a meeting, transportation meeting, we have five non, well, some of them may be special, five new students, in addition to the students who currently attend schools outside of Hastings, have applied for out-of-district transportation for next year, going to private schools that we don't transport to.
Tori, I don't, I don't want to interrupt you, but I know where, I know where you're heading towards. I wonder, I, I think it's so important that we get this maybe upfront as a headline.
Sure.
The bottom of slide 14.
Yeah.
On five-year revenues. Can we, can we hit that?
Sure.
And go to slide 15? Because I think that's the real headline stuff.
Okay. But it is important for the board to consider all those things, because like, as I said, any change, and we've talked about this, you know, a change in the interest rate. Well, I'm, I'm projecting, we're going to get 600- rate. Well, I'm, I'm projecting we're going to get $600,000 from interest next year. Four years ago, we got $40,000. If that drops, we have a revenue gap that has to be filled. So each and every one of these are beyond what we're talking about here, that one thing could change, and then we have another, you know, a plug, another hole to plug. So it's important as you look at, think about even next year's budget, and now we could look at what that means over five years.
Yeah, I, I think in jumping, I mean, what Maureen has put together here on slides eight, nine, and 10, and 11 have got to be absorbed. Because this tells us, I mean, incredible creativity here, and I'll go back and work on the phasing, but let's be direct. We are on a tightrope, Hastings. We are on a tightrope financially. And we have significant facility needs. We have other major issues in Farragut complex for the safety of, it's a safe building now, but any new leader I bring in looks at the facility and says, this work needs, this place needs investment. But then you have these other things. So we'll jump to the five-year. But I think we want to be creative, we want to be innovative, but we've got to be thinking multi-year, both in the programming, we'll do that, but then what the financial realities are.
Or at least slide, slide 15 for next year's budget.
Yeah, well, I'm on 13 right now.
Okay.
Right, yeah, 13. So again, thi- this particular five-year expenditure projection, we looked at this in January when we started our budget, like our pre-budget work sessions amongst the board here. And this was really interesting, because I was going to update it to where we currently are. But when I looked at it, the number in the low column is almost identical to where our current budget is. So it shows you that this projection model is pretty spot-on. And I say that because it's building off of where, it, it's really building off our estimated end of year. But of course, interestingly enough, even though there's ebbs and flows within that number, some things changed here, some things changed there, they typically have a pretty much aligned to where we, our budgets end up. So I say that to say, this modeling, although there may be some, as Bill would say, inputs and outputs different, in different spots, they typically, because what you're doing is, and I can tell you that the, even in the factors we use to project salaries and employee benefits, we're not even projecting at the highest level of what it could be. So in other words, we're using very modest, even like salary increases, you know, assuming that there's some change in, you know, some people, one or two people retire, you make it a little breakage and all the rest. So there is that in the modeling there. But what I want to then, you know, now show you, so now we know we're pretty much where we ended up this year, which would be that 62, 468 number on the bottom of the 25, 26 projection. If you look to, now if, if this would be assuming like very, very low increases in benefits and salaries, which we know are not going to be the case next year. So in my mind, we're closer to that middle column projection for the 26, 27 or the high. That would mean that our budget, which is pretty standard, which we, with the health insurance increases, we would need then to sustain next year 65 million, 656, 922, right? Like we assume our budget, for the most part, health insurance increases, we know, ERS, TRS, we have a good understanding of where the state's going with the retirement systems. We're, we are currently negotiating three contracts, but we know regionally salaries are quite higher than they've been in previous contracts. So that means we've accounted for that in our budget, which was extremely important, to, to negotiate fair settlements with our unions. So that would require 3.2 million dollars more increase in our budget to budget with nothing added. If you look then at the 26, 27 projection, again, what happened this year, we were only allowed to increase taxes 1.7 million, and that was with a growth factor of 1.172. There's years in which we only have a 2%. So what I just used here, just because I don't know what, if we will have a growth factor, because that's, we can't, we don't get that till the February of the following year. If we were at like the 2% CPI can never be above 2 with the state, they don't allow you even if it's higher. If we only had, say, a 2.5% increase allowable tax cap next year, we would be short 2.2 million dollars.
Next year.
Next year. And, and in that model, I am assuming an increase in state aid. I'm assuming a 2%, which was what it was this year. I'm assuming an increase in sales tax. I'm assuming an increase in interest in income. I'm not even like pulling these things down. I mean, I'm not, I'm being modest. But like if there is a change in any of this, and so there's two factors, right? I'm assuming increases in revenue. When there's a decrease in revenue, you have to make it up in your tax levying. Right? So right now, in order to balance next year's budget, the one we're looking at, we know, in the best, best case scenario, we have a 1.3 million dollar shortage. Worst case scenario, we have a 3.2 million dollar shortage. Now, what that means is, you know, there's things with districts do, they go for a tax cap override. Now, we may actually have potentially a 4%, you never know. Like we could have a growth factor next year. I don't know how they, sometimes I'm curious how the science they determine all those numbers. I know how they do it, but I'm not sometimes sure if, if, you know, it, it aligns with the brick and mortar expansion in the village, because that's, that's how they get the growth factor. But if, if even if we were to say we were allowed to levy 4%, you know, we would still potentially need to go for an override. I think this is more of like a 5% tax increase to sustain next year. You know, barring we get some additional monies, barring we get some savings. I mean, sometimes things do change, like, as an example, like we may have less kids who want buses. Now, I mean, there are different ebbs and flows to expenses. Certainly, you know, certain support services, when there's changes in students, students graduate, students move out of district that may cost, you know, there are things in which sometimes you get some expenditure savings. Of course, we don't know what they may be, but I think this just really demonstrates that we are using, and we're going to use fund balance next year, and we may end up using a, a bit more, you know, maybe we do plug more fund balance in next year. You know, I, I don't have it at the same level. I pulled it down a bit, because again, that's, you know, we have to be careful of the management of that. We want to not use it all in one or two or three years. We want to, you know, use what we have. So even if we were to bump those numbers up a bit, let's just say we use the same levels we use this year in fund balance, so that would give us another three, four, 500. So, you know, just still looking at potentially at least a million dollars that you would have to raise above the tax cap, 1.5 million.
Right.
I mean, that, so it's just, you know, it just demonstrates that, to your early question, like it, it is so like fragile, like, you know, like $500,000 in one, in one year, you know, just over the course of time, that's $500,000. And, and as you can see with what we were doing this evening, you know, if you, if you lost to a 4, 500, it matters, you know. It, it, this is when you start doing what we're doing. Oh, can we cut this 0.1? And it seems kind of ridiculous, but, but it is, we have all these other things we have to always worry about as well, beyond what we're talking about right now.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, so again, this is something, and we look at it every year. Now, granted, does it change? Of course. I don't want to be doomsday, but I do think, even if, if things turn out a bit rosier, or we end up saying, okay, we, you know, we'll feel comfortable. Because I would imagine if, if this year was upon us, I would say, okay, well, I would increase some of the fund balance. You know, we wouldn't want to take a, that big of a hit. But you would still, I, I think we're at a point in which, and this is more, less about the tax cap, and more about what do you really need to increase your revenues to sustain your expenditures? We're, when we're seeing expenditures rising, you know, health insurance, you know, salary costs at a potential 5%, right? That, that's the majority of our budget. We can't only 3% like increase in our revenues, like it doesn't work that way. You can't balance five, 4% to 5% increases in expenses with 3%. And again, don't forget, that's 3% on the smaller number. So it's 5% on the whole budget, 3% on levy, which is not our total revenue package. So that leaves, that's where you get holes. So it's not, it's not, the tax cap makes it difficult with that, unless the years we get growth factor, it's very difficult in, in, in where we find ourselves. Because health insurance the last three years for us has been, you know, it's, it's an equivalent of a $3 million swing in our, oh, not quite 3 million, but you know, a, a big chunk of change for us.
That's, I just want to point, that's why I brought up the, what Andy Claman raised about fiscal constraints and where we are, because this budget is two weeks away from us. But the next one that's a year and two weeks away is very clear already. And so I think that for my purposes, the, the energy has to be on preserving continuity and things like that. And, and because I think we can all see at the bottom of slide 15, that it's a very big challenge. And when we pass this budget, hopefully, it will be immediately on, not us per se, but the district will start immediately working on that. So we have to be extremely mindful of that. In the interest of time, I know there's a, any other main things we want to hit here, is I do want to get the, the public comment in?
No, no, I just, again, not, again, I don't want this to be the final, but I think this is realistically, you know, just in order to maintain, we would need, like this year, we understood, you know, we have a lot of things going on. There was a lot of concern with all the changes. I think Jody kind of alluded to it. We know there's that larger concern. We didn't feel like this was the year to go for the override. I mean, I think in the beginning of this budget process, I had suggested that you consider it. And every district hits that mark at a different time. We have a unique set of circumstances. You know, sometimes we, just our student needs, right, that drives the budget. It's not all cut and dry. You know, we've had years where we, that's why I don't typically try to compare too much in terms of budget to budget increases, because people can have either a decrease of enrollment or a variety of factors. I think we just happen to have, you know, a, a bunch of things we added this year to the budget that we've spoken about multiple times. And then the last thing I will say about this budget is, as you know, this year, thankfully, this year, we did have the resources within our current budget to address some major facilities failures that were beyond what the insurance is covering. And that's a 500, that was $500,000 this year.
Right.
Of, of monies that if we, you know, and that's why the, the use of reserves and being able, you know, when, if there were an unforeseen circumstance next year, we would then come, and depending if we were able to handle it within our spending plan, we may say we need to release $2 million from here to cover, because we need to, you know, for student or for different needs that may arise. So it's just, you know, we just always try to be conservative and careful and, and make sure we can sustain what we're doing.
Thank you. I just want to, if you can be quick with questions, I do want to get to the public. So any questions for Maureen for which she raised?
I mean, I would just kind of observe that it's a little bleak, right? And, and these kind of difficult discussions and all the dominoes that happened over like 12 conversations this year, that's going to be the case going forward, right? I mean, it's not going to change. So we have to really kind of
Yeah, I
Look for the efficiencies in what we have and continue.
Yeah, to put it very succinctly, I mean, I think that's why we're working so hard to have a good budget this year and think in phases going forward, and to try and, and like it or not, Hastings, we're going to be in, in what some call a cutback mode for a while now, unless we go above cap. And that's a decision that you and the village may say we can do. And that gives us a little more flexibility with staying within cap, and I respect that if that's critical. It just means all these factors here on the slide, whether you got, study it, because it is a very tight situation. And we're thinking of that this year. So how do we provide for the high school, sorry, provide for the high school, let FMS get to the strength level closer, not fully, maintain Hillside, but do that within a very tight fiscal situation and respecting the taxpayers. As we start to do ins and outs on that, we push ups. That means we have to go elsewhere to reduce. And, and you see what I'm saying? And then next year, you've just got to know what's coming. You've just got to know what's coming.
And I just, you know, again, saying, this year was a difficult, because when you have three open negotiations, you have no idea where that's going to end. But as I stated earlier, and you know, this, we're not going to get into negotiations here, but the reality is the last contract, right, was in a different time, that was negotiated in a different time with different, different salary increases in the region, right? Regionally, the, the salary increases are lower. Now they're much higher. So we have to factor that in. And, you know, when you double a salary or not dou- you know, whatever, increase that by X amount on $30 million with the salaries, it, it does matter, you know. So we needed, we need to ensure that our budget's moving forward. When we make a financial commitment to unions and we negotiate salaries, we want to make sure that we're able to, you know, we don't want to do it and then have to like cut people, like that's, you know, which again, but we also can't expect unions not to get paid the way their peers do in the region. So we do have to ensure that that money is properly protected in this budget and that, that we have, you know, prioritized throughout this process to ensure for fair negotiations, to be honest with you.
Absolutely. And I would say that the counter to that is they're our partner in coming up with, you know, solutions, like, you know, the advisory or the other things that are on the table, right? Like, we have to get in there together.
Yes.
And solve them.
Yeah. Because we just want to make sure that that's properly, you know, protected.
Okay. Thank you, Maureen. Thank you very much. Sorry to rush a little bit, but.
Dave has one.
Yeah, I, I have to agree with you, Maureen. And I, I think we spoke of this at some point. We are, we have three negotiations coming up. And when was the last time that the current steps and differentials for teachers was shifted from what it is now?
No.
So how, how fast does a teacher get to top salary right now?
16 years.
16 years, right? And how long has that been going on for?
Oh, wait, no, there, is there one at 18? We, uh, no, we, we changed it for, for, for quite, it's 18 now. I'm sorry, it is 18. It used to be 16. For 18, I think that was negotiated maybe two or three cycles ago, maybe six years ago or so, six, six to nine years ago.
So I'm just thinking as, you know, I'm, I'm not a proponent for paying teachers less money and having new teachers come in at lower, lower levels. But we really have to think about what iteration of a contract looks like moving forward.
This is a little bit of an executive session topic, topically?
I'm just talking about, I'm not talking about it from our executive session. I'm talking about it.
No, no, I don't mean, it's something that we would, we would have an executive session about to discuss contract, contractual terms, because we're under a current contract. I'm, I'm not admonishing you, I'm just saying that.
I'm, I'll rephrase. I think we have to think about the future of, like, how we do things, because we, we're chasing salary, and salary is our huge, our largest piece here. And if we continue to go the way we're going, we're, this deficit, this revenue high shortfall in 2930 of 9.3 million dollars, it's not going to be sustainable for the taxpayers.
Right.
So we have lots of things that need to happen. And I think that negotiations, when it comes to contracts, have to be on the table with that.
Fairly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, public, for being so incredibly patient. Melissa, you have a list, right? Please, please do observe the three-minute rule as best you can. We appreciate it. So as it fails, thank you. Welcome. Just grab, oh, you got it.
Uh, no.
This one? The one on, the one on the stand, I think.
The one in your hand.
Oh, it is?
Hello. All right. Here we are. We made it. Public comments. Sorry. Appreciate your patience. So I'm the parent of two girls, both in the middle school. We're fans of the school system here. But I want to speak more from the perspective of a high school English teacher that I am. I'm going to put my timer on now. And as it turns out, I'm also an executive functioning teacher, because I teach my kids to bring books to class, and if they don't, they get a bad grade. End of story. I, I think that's an inherent lesson right there. So I also have some experience as a school administrator. So I really appreciate the complexity and the weeds that you mire in, the public-facing aspect of your job. I don't have the constitution to do. Appreciate your reflection upon the, the, the feedback that you got from the last session. So thank you for that. But I do wonder if in the miasma of numbers and acronyms, if we're really losing sight of what a school is for. I think we have to agree that the heart of a school is in its teachers, in its full-time teachers who get insurance, who can afford to live near the school. And I think the goal of the school is also to ensure that students are seen and they're excited about learning. So if I'm reading the, the slides from the 311 meeting correctly, we have a situation where 54 kids have signed up for creative writing. Instead of giving this three sections, you're choosing to give you this two sections. And in this budget, with a new superintendent position, a disproportionate number of new middle school faculty, and amid a bond that includes glass enclosed, two-story cafeteria space with roof deck and marquee-like entrance facade, you're choosing to run two classes of 27 instead of three of 18. This makes a difference. So teaching is wonderfully innovative, but it's also stubbornly iterative. Commenting on 27 short stories is 50% more work than commenting on 18 short stories. I could count to 27 to demonstrate that, but I think we've already had enough patients tested. When you make these choices, you're sending a message, even if you don't intend to, that you don't care as much about your faculty and about your students. And it should be important to you how this lands, how this affects the morale of teachers. When you give disproportionately low raises to teachers, and then pile on more students on their rosters, what do you think they're going to say? Well, if you cite an article in the buzzer, they say it's disrespectful, devaluing, frustrating, and they feel underappreciated. I don't want this to be the vibe in my daughter's classrooms, and I don't know why it needs to be. Let's be clear, learning classrooms, and I don't know why it needs to be. Let's be clear. Learning happens in the classroom, and it doesn't have to be a lavish classroom. I happen to teach at a school built by an eight-digit donation from the Winklevoss brothers and a gym that has an eight-digit donation.
Tim, sorry, you're well over three.
No, I'm not. I, I've got a timer right here.
The clerk times you though.
I've got 30 seconds and I've written this well. Um, and this, so it doesn't mean that my kids are literary critics and NBA stars. I've taught some amazing students over my 30-year run, and it's remarkably simple. If you want good students, you need good teachers. Nothing else matters if you don't have that. Please make room in your budget to retain, maintain, and respect your teachers.
Thank you. Who's next? Good evening.
Hi. Hi, everyone. Marit Har, 161 Mount Hope Boulevard. A first thank you to everyone. Thank you for listening to Parents Concerns. Thank you for revising this budget. Thank you for all the presentations, questions tonight, all of that. Um, you know, I, listening to this, I do feel hopeful that this new budget will not lead to significant increases in class size or cuts to electives next year, and I thank you for that. Um, I do want to speak tonight because I am a little bit concerned about the future beyond next year and in light of Maureen's numbers, um, which are scary. Uh, I want to just bring up a few things that I hope everyone can keep in mind or think about as we move forward. Uh, one is the issue of class size. This, the average class size and how, um, it has been described, I, I don't think that that is an accurate way to look at class size in high school. Core classes are what matter in terms of like how big are actual core classes, not how big are core classes when you average them with a very small photo class. So people have listed these numbers. For example, my ninth grader, math 27, Spanish 26, English 25, history 25, Studio R 25, bio 24, PE 23. That is the average for most kids, right? So when you're talking about hiring a point nine, a point four, a point six, rather than a 1.0, you know, this is, this is where it matters. Um, the other thing, just small that I hope are being kept in mind, where that point two for HASP and the point two for PL end up, will take away teacher time, you know, from somewhere else. Now, again, I think we're probably okay for next year, but the thing that I keep bringing up is the year after and the year after that. I have all the numbers here, the projections based on the numbers that are, are in the slides from last week. Enrollment goes from 528 to 532 next year. That I think can be absorbed. Then it goes to 549 in 2026 and 555 in 2027. And that is actually with zero students entering the district. That is just using numbers that say zero students enter. This year, 12 students entered between ninth and 12. So that 555 could be as high as 580, it could be 585, it could, it's a lot of extra students. So what I hope is that, you know, if there is some fine tuning going on, even to get that point four to a point six, right, then that person has benefits. And it'll be easier to get that point six to a point eight when we need them. It'll be easier to, you know, like if we need to make that adjustment at the high school, having a full line there with, with benefits and all of that will be extremely helpful. And, and I wonder if something with that executive function, if it's something in the middle school, if there can be a way, even if it's not a full position this year, if it's a position with benefits, perhaps that will help with some of these issues as the school gets, you know, much bigger in the coming years. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Hello. I'm making this statement on behalf of Frida Belasco from 1221 Newwood Avenue. She was unable to come today due to illness. So as Frida says, as a voter and graduating senior who has been in the school district since kindergarten, I understand how hard the administration works to ensure that all students get an outstanding education and how much they take into account student opinion. As a concerned student, I appreciate and understand that the board has taken into account concerns for the community about the proposed school budget. As the board and district administration finalizes the 2025 to 2026 budget, I urge you to continue taking these concerns into account as well as honoring Hastings' commitment to providing students with the opportunity to explore their academic interests. One Hastings' value that I appreciate is how the school encourages students to challenge themselves and try new things. Any reduction to the number of current teaching positions and the subsequent removal of key classes and sections of classes would hinder the student's ability to grow academically throughout their time at HHS and be competitive in their college applications. I have been particularly concerned about the history department. Previously discussed budget changes would have led to the elimination of up to eight electives in this department. Additionally, the only three high-level history courses are AP European History, AP US History, and Supa US History, and a reduction in these section, excuse me, and there would have been a reduction in these sections, make it impossible for interested students to fit into these classes in their schedules. Reducing electives and cutting sections would have been damaging for students who are passionate about history and the humanities overall. In my personal experience, even without additional cuts, I had to independently study two advanced civic classes because they were not offered in our curriculum so that I could further study an area that I am passionate about. This is not just a humanities issue. Some students have concern, have concerns about classes, including AP Stats as well as AP Computer Science, um, and this may be threatened by cuts to the budget and faculty. These classes teach crucial skills that are becoming increasingly important in our world that is driven by technology and data. HHS teachers may also be unfairly hit by a reduction in the number of teaching positions. I value and am extremely grateful to the dedication that they put ensuring that all HHS students continue to be able to take, to take classes that can excite them. I urge you to ensure that existing faculty aren't required to take one more, or take on more teaching obligations in a way that will unfairly burden them. The students I have discussed the budget with want to know that their voices are being heard. I appreciate how the board and, how hard the board and administration are working and how difficult it is to craft this budget. Thank you for listening to our concerns as you continue the challenging task ahead.
Thank you. Okay. You can, you can just say, say your name and address. No, you can go up. It's okay.
Um, Alex Knott, 34 Sinek. I had sent a letter. Um, thanks very much for being really thoughtful and responsive. I, I know it's hard. Um, big proponent of supporting the middle school. It, it needs a ton of work. On the high school, just, I guess, three principles I'd like you to think about. One is people live here, come here for the academic excellence, the core academics. I think you were, tried to be very responsive. You know, my high schooler came, you know, he was going to speak because you're offering the APs and you, you heard that. So I appreciate that. On the academic excellence, that is the focus, right? It's not the ski team. It's not, that's not why we moved to Hastings. He's a three-sport athlete. We're here because of the APs and those courses. The second is class size, which a few people mentioned, which I have concerns about. And the third is those who don't really have a voice who are being hindered, I believe, still. So what, on the class size, I think the, the prior person spoke to it. It seems like English, social studies, math are going to be plus three is, is what I saw in the high school. Um, and so in terms of outcomes, who gets impacted the most by that? It's actually the kids in those classes with special needs. So I've got three kids. I've got, they're all different. They're all beautiful kids. My youngest kid, when COVID hit and we sat in front of a computer and the teacher tried to talk to him, right, couldn't process what was going on. We moved here, right? And Laura Sullivan wasn't here, but she did a tremendous job. We heard that Hastings Special Ed had failed people for like a decade, and she worked really hard to build something that worked here. We were able to bring my son back into the school district, and we had a lot of concerns. And I got to say, for the last two years in middle school with all of its problems, he's totally thrived in the current environment. But he's thrived because he's got special support in the Learning Resource Center, and he's got special support, not just in class. And when you have that kid who's with a special ed teacher and there's two in the class, they get value. And if there's seven kids in there, you know what that means? That means Andy, right, is going to have to have a bunch of tutors outside of school. That means Andy, not only can he play his sports, right, he's going to have to find time elsewhere. It's going to put a big burden, and then it's going to force us to make a decision whether this is the right school district for us. So there are numbers on your thing. The 25 kids, the 33 kids, saying, Bill, outcomes, you want to know what the outcome of the budget is? The outcome is those kids with special needs, I, I'm not a special ed person, so maybe the, the latest philosophy and stuff, you know, I'll, I'll respect that. But going from two to seven, the impact, the outcome will be on that kid, those kids. And so those, you know, fantastic for the vast majority of parents that really care about the APs. I'm one of those parents. But I'm also the parent of a kid who needs the support, and we've done a great job and we fixed things. And I really am concerned about where we're headed, um, on that front. So, thank you. My, my one request, if there's any tweaking, would be, take one from the middle school, whatever that is, and instead of going from two to seven, if you go from two to four, a special ed could deal with like four kids, but not seven. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? No, no one's listening? Anyone else inspired?
Okay. Um, we're going to move on to a board presentation on the bond. This is, this is historical perspective on what the, where the, where the bond sits within. So you can all watch it on video later.
We need you to stay for the bond.
Hang out with us.
So this presentation, it's something that's sort of organically developed amongst the board, um, which is, as trustees, we see the larger picture that the bond fits within. It's historical document, and also the same way we're looking ahead fiscally, we need to sort of look back and see how we got here. And so this slide deck is going to hit some of the key elements that are in the bond and provide that perspective. And then, so trustees, I want to go through it. I'm going to talk through it a little bit, but by all means, chime in whenever, whenever you want. Is the, is this button, which button did I use?
To the right.
So it's that way, like, hey, work. Okay, so I'm actually going to use this laptop.
So clear, Alex. It's not on.
Okay. Is it on? Okay. Thank you very much. First off, and this is, this has come up with a lot of trustees, and again, chime in whenever you want.
Yeah, I'm going to chime in right now and say, when you go through this, can you also talk about, like, why do we need a new entryway?
Yes, we'll come, we'll come up with that. So what's in the bond? Because there's been a lot of docu, a lot of letters circulated in the paper and amongst residents that, that reflect things that are not accurate, actually. So what is in the new bond? A new, oops, this is very sensitive. A new entryway that's budgeted, budgeted at $940,000. You can see past that amount, it's the sort of monthly household average, not including interest, just doing a simple math. So you have a sort of sense of the personal scope of these things. A new entryway is in the bond. A new cafeteria is in the bond. The renovation of the old cafeteria into new classroom space at 6,000 square feet of classroom and learning space. That's the only, uh, learning upgrade that's in the bond. That's sufficient amount of room for the middle school. There are two athletic field upgrades at Burke with a price and material to, to be determined, and there is building envelope and, and mechanical engineering and plumbing work at FMS totaling $5 million. Question?
Can you clarify that? New entryway, 940,000 dash 1.3.
That's sort of the monthly, there's 3,000 domicile in Hastings, taking that over the course of the 20-year bond by 12 months. Again, this is not include interest. This is just kind of a simple calculation, kind of put it into a personal perspective. So.
$1.30 a month.
Yes. Well, that's what, as an individual test.
Over 20 years.
For household.
Correct. No, it's a 20-year bond, I think. Yeah, this, this is done with 20 years.
And does, and does that change depending on the value of the house?
Yes. This is just sort of a.
So it could be more, it could be less.
Right.
Okay.
Exactly. It's just a simple, simple, like, way to sort of feel what the numbers are on the individual scale.
Thank you.
Of course. Moving on, the Farragut complex. When we, when we mention it, I don't think people realize what we're talking about is four buildings, okay? And you can see on the, these are sequentially left to right, time-wise. They were built in Farragut. It was built in 1902. Um, the other one was 1911, Mount Hope Edition in 1925, uh, and then, I forget the name of it actually, but in 1931. These four buildings of Farragut complex are the entirety of our middle school and high school classroom space, all of it. Isn't the Farragut complex large enough? So the middle school portion of the school is much smaller than the high school. How much smaller? It is 40% less space. The middle school also has virtually the exact same number of students as the high school. And as indicated here, we no longer have the space to accommodate the level of programs and services for what New York State requires and what a modern school generally supports as part of a comprehensive education. We're talking about the middle school here. And, you know, you know, Farragut complex used to have much more space. This is a diagram. The black is the high school space, and the yellow is the middle school space, and the white is the shade. I'll come back to that in a second. But how did we get to the, to the fact where the middle school is 40% smaller than the high school? So in the 1990s, the, you know, the enrollment in this district, following the sort of collapse of industry in the late 70s, cratered. We hit almost a little bit above 1,000 kids, I think in 1992, 1993. The, at that time, the district offices were all housed on, at the Burke estate. Billy Burke's house, which I, Maureen, you'll remember.
Yes.
Billy Burke's house sat on the Fieldtop Field, and the drive that would go up to the Burke complex, that was her driveway, right? All the district offices were in that building. There were not a lot of kids in, in, in the Hastings district at that time. So when that house got condemned, all those offices were moved into what is now the middle.
Yeah, so the superintendent, like all of our offices were in there.
Were moved into the middle school. Um, additionally, traditionally, the, the cafeteria was in the library, where the current library is in that building. In the early 90s, again, because of smalling, falling enrollment, it was moved down to where the fax room is currently. And it was just a room to eat in. It was not, there was no, there was no food service there. And then in 1990, 1991, it moved up into its current location. So where, where the cafeteria currently sits was academic space previously, was classrooms previously, but because they didn't need it, they moved the cafeteria up there and it became a full-service cafeteria as opposed to just being a room downstairs. And again, this is sort of, so what you see is that the middle school sort of got eaten up by, it had extra space, and it sort of got eaten up by these other things that got moved into its space. And that has been the status quo since the mid 90s, when the school had 1,100 kids, 1,200 kids. So is the current cafeteria undersized? New York State has reviewed our cafeteria, considers it substantially too small for our building population. We know this because initially, Maureen, you can, you can respond as well.
Okay.
We thought, well, you know what? They're probably not going to cover it. And.
Right. So, so when we, being we didn't have a cafeteria at Hillside, right? So if, if the cafeteria was the, um, I guess sole, like, oh, we just want something new, it, it may then not be eligible for state building aid. But the, the, the reasons our architects, when they did their analysis, explained to us that it would qualify is that not only are we, you know, gaining instructional space by, really, which is the key to doing it. I think although it is undersized for our population, which then allows it to be adable, it's also connected to being able to gain substantial classroom space back. So I think that, that coupled together is why, you know, that it, it does make the most sense because you're getting a cafeteria that is sized correctly for the student population in the building and can properly, um, hold them. Currently, we have students, I know that wasn't your question, but, but it is really like, just to kind of remind that it is undersized, but the driver of the project is to get those back as classrooms.
Right.
You know, if I think it was solely the capacity of the cafeteria, I don't think we'd be proposing if it was just that.
No, for sure.
But because it is also not at the capacity needed for the amount of students.
It opens it up to state aid.
Correct. Cause there's, during the high school lunch period, and. Correct, because there's, during the high school lunch period, and a lot of kids, I mean, it's over, you know, when you have a whole, a whole school eating at once, it's over, yeah.
Right, so, I mean, I think the trustees understand this, but the basic fulcrum of this bond is that we have a cafeteria that is, that we can build state aidably, where it's essentially, New York State is dollar matching our inputs. And by building a new cafeteria, we can repurpose the old cafeteria, which used to be academic space, at a very low cost comparatively into 6,000 square feet of educational space, which the middle school needs. One of the things, Jody, you had raised this question of, like, people keep on focusing on the fact that it's glass. And, you know, in the letter we wrote to the dispatch last week, we made some of the key points. We went back to the architects and we asked them, is there another material that is more, that is more cost-effective than glass? And the answer was, no, not really. It's not, the bulk of the cost is the footing and the construction and the overseeing. It's not an inherently expensive material, even though, for some reason, people focus on it as though it is. It's not, and because of the type of construction, where we're enclosing an unused courtyard, we're going to be closing in windows that are currently exterior windows, windows of classrooms. So, we need, we need a glass front in order to let light and ambient, everything pass through. And more to the point, the state Historic Preservation Office, which is called Chipo, they have a preference for what they call complementary but contrasting designs. So, you know, our architects and engineers have worked very hard to design something that meets Chipo's requirements, meets the building's requirements, and does it at a reasonable cost. And we can chase things with them, but there is no, their back-of-the-envelope statement to us is, there is no there, there. This is the right choice for the design problem.
Alex, I just wanna say that I asked that just because I feel like...
That's a very good question.
There are a few hooks that people, I believe in the community, have kind of...
Yeah, dug into.
Dug into, particularly in questioning and challenging. And one of them is this idea that we're just building this fancy glass atrium cafeteria and...
With a roof deck.
And I think that gets focused on and I think it's important that we understand and we can explain and communicate why that was done. And it wasn't to make us be this fancy glass atrium cafeteria.
Show school.
But there were reasons for that and that, and the way that it also ties to moving the cafeteria to be able to meet our instructional needs, not just so that we could have a fancy glass enclosure.
But that's a good point, because one of the key savings in this bond is that a lot of the, you can speak to this, Maureen, a lot of the interior work we would do with re-renovating the cafeteria, we can do ourselves in-house. And that per square foot cost is 120% less, I mean, and, you know...
So, we would use a contractor to do a demo of it because to remove, say, the kitchen and all the rest and those type areas, but in terms of, you know, reconstruction and all of that, we could handle like that, that level of the work. It would be designed, it would be overseen to ensure, you know, integrity of design and all the rest by architects and engineers. But in terms of the majority of carpentry and electric, we would do. The HVAC might have to be modified a bit, that would be an external. But again, that, that square footage price here acknowledges all that. It acknowledges the external and what internally we could do. And primarily in terms of the construction of the space would be performed by our own staff.
Yeah, thank you. All right, moving on. What is our New York State aid like? So, this comes up a lot, Tracy, you brought this up specifically. Our current building aid from New York State is a 40% rate of reimbursement. That's significantly higher than sister districts. I think Irvington's is something like 30?
I think 20?
Or 24?
I mean, I could ask, but I know...
I have a hard time looking it up.
They're definitely sub 30.
Right, but some of the sister districts that are, we would say are comparable to us, have rates that are 40% less, 50% less. There is very good reason to believe we will soon have our reimbursement rate lowered significantly. I link here at the bottom, it's a very long report, we're obviously not gonna go into it. But the Rockefeller Institution Foundation Aid Report, it's well-done. And the picture you walk away from that is the first point here. There is good reason to lower reimbursement rate. Now, all the, currently considering, especially even the critical ones, even just MEP, cost millions more, millions more.
I would just add, once we lock in, that they'll honor it, but next year...
Correct, that's a very good point, that's a very good point. I mean, I wouldn't say that next year's at risk at this point, but because it's a process that New York State has to go through. But this came up in another meeting, there, there's this idea that, but what happens if New York State pulls the aid? Once they, you know, it is a contract, once we go into a bond, it is a legal contract. And we asked Maureen about this, she does not recall any instance ever of New York State clawing back or clawing its way out of an existing contract. So, we wanna reiterate that.
Yes, so the only, the only time I've seen them reduce aid, it's out of what would be the foundation aid now. So, expenditure-driven aids are honored, right? The calculation, the formula, building aid, BOC's aid, things such as that, that are based on expenditure-driven. They honor the formula, but the area where they have the flexibility, which is like that overall per-student allocation, I've seen them do that, but only after 2008, which was the market collapse. I mean, that was the most significant rate since the depression and the real estate bubble, yeah.
And that's that annual funding stream as opposed to the multi-bond.
I mean, I just, the building aid, it's so huge. It's almost half of the bond. And so, some, some community members are doing the math and not incorporating that into the equation. So, our numbers aren't making sense to them in terms of the breakdown, but that is so important. We are practically getting half of this back. And the timing is tough. The world, the country feels precarious economically, but we still have significant infrastructure needs and this is the year to lock in the 47% rate.
Yeah.
Agreed, and you know, also another thing about that is, I think it's also hard for people to keep in, when we think about the cost, the total cost of the bond, A, there's the 47% money that we get back, but also the bonds that we've done in the not-so-distant path, this space, and then when we did the Reynolds Field and the high school auditorium, I think that was the previous one.
I'm gonna get into all of that right now.
But the cost of doing it, the cost of, the costs were so much less.
Very, very.
If you think about it, like, it's so much more...
Now, when I was, when I was looking at old bonds, it was like, this district had like a $1.4 million bond. I was like, you know, like, the numbers are eye-popping.
The cost of living has increased so much. But something that I, I wish, you know, there is a newsletter that circulates, the Hastings Sustainable Schools. I haven't, I don't know, have I missed it? Has anybody mentioned this, 47% reimbursement?
No.
No, wow, I mean, I don't understand that. Really don't understand how the authors of that newsletter would neglect to mention that we will get 47% back.
Well, but...
Well, it doesn't tell the narrative.
They're writing for reasons to be opposed to the bond. This is a reason to be supportive of it.
Right, so it doesn't tell, it doesn't support their narrative, but it's a fact.
Yeah, I mean, that's what, that's what we're here for tonight, is to put these talking points together with the facts that we have. So, one that had come up, that came up in some of the letters, was hasn't HOH, Hastings passed a lot of bond? The reality is the exact opposite. Hastings is one of the most lightly bonded districts amongst our peers. The educational spaces of that Farragut complex, those four buildings, have barely been touched, we're gonna go into it, barely been touched by a bond since they were built in 1902, 1911, 1920, and 1931. Building work is often done out of our budget, which pressures the budget, but also pressures our reserves. You know, one of the talking, talking points that comes up is, we're passing a bond, isn't that going to squeeze out, you know, budget spending, right? It's not the bond, per se, that does that. It's when, what we've done for many years, where we have to spend money out of our budget on things that come up. And you mentioned one of the things tonight was 500,000 system repairs, and that, there's other things as well.
No, don't be quiet, that's really important.
I have a slide on that.
Falling apart.
I mean, I sent a picture to Maureen as I was going upstairs yesterday and I popped in the library to see it. And it's, the whole wall is gone. Like, it's, it's in disrepair. But once you see it, it's really eye-popping.
This is brilliant, we're gonna blast this out first thing tomorrow and then get busy all around it because...
It, yeah, it needed to be done. It's simple and factual.
And I think, I think we also wanna kind of, this is, this is the culmination of where needs, need timing, kind of match up, right? Like, we have a need, it's not gonna get better, as we know with our houses, when, when we delay projects, they only get more expensive and you suffer from emergencies and your budgets as a result. And then the timing is the 47%, because that really has a risk next year. So, we realize that there's, you know, other expenses and people have concerns about the cost, but it's not gonna get better. It's only gonna get worse, so we're trying to take advantage of the moment.
Yeah, well said, thank you. So, going back to the same question, hasn't Hastings passed a lot of bonds? So, from 1997 to 2017, Hastings invested 18.15 million into capital projects. That was two bonds. The average Dobbs, Artsley, and Irvington over that time, same 20-year, was 57.9 million. And not one of those districts spent less than 50 million. This is not about, this often gets framed as like keeping, like, we're trying to be like super aspirational. It's not, it's really, we're trying to keep, the goal is to keep a floor under, under the district. And so, we are not trying to keep up with the Joneses with these other districts. We're just trying to see what other districts that are similar, are similar in size, what they're reasonably doing. And if you look at the debt comparison chart, this was prepared for the 2019 bond, it was prepared in 2017. And you can see, it's very small perhaps, but Irvington, their annual debt service was 2,700. Dobbs Ferry was 1,483. With the bond, which did end up passing, Hastings was 1266. So, from that bond to 2024 now, Hastings passed that bond, which was 18.4 million dollars.
That's the Hillside bond?
Yes, correct. That's this bond.
18.4 mil...
Million.
18.4 million dollar bonds for Hillside.
Well, it wasn't just for Hillside, but, yeah.
Right, but, but community members who oppose that bond were opposing putting a real cafeteria in an elementary school.
Yes, they were, I remember the conversations.
Yes, we don't need it, they don't need a real cafeteria, and put the overflow of students in trailers. That was the proposal.
So, I will come back to that, we will come back to that. So, in 2017 to now, we passed that one bond, 18.4 million dollars. In that same time, Artsley passed a $60 million bond in 2023, you can see the numbers here. Dobbs, 20 million, Irvington, 18.8, Edgemont, 62, Tarrytown, 93. The districts around us, who already have a higher capital base and have already enjoyed that, that building aid from New York State, which is our own money after all, are, you know, I'm sad, you know, it's sad to say, but exceeding us massively, exceeding the capital expenditure to, at a rate which is, you know, unsustainable for us. The 2018 bond, just to point it out, the actual amount of spending that, you know, that reached educational spaces. So, apart from the auditorium and the music suite, no educational space was created, nor purposed, nor restored. Okay, so the 2018 bond didn't touch that stuff. The 2014 bond, I didn't put the data here, but it was mostly about outdoor work and MEP stuff as well. We had a bond which predates all of us...
Didn't the 2014 bond, wasn't that the high school auditorium?
There was slight upgrades, but there, but no classroom spaces, there's...
No, but it was the whole redo of the auditorium.
No, the, the middle school auditorium.
No, no, the high school auditorium, it's the same thing.
No, there's two different auditoriums. The only three spaces that have been touched by those bonds, really, are the two auditoriums and the one music room. There's not other, there's not one other educational space. The 2,000 bond, likewise, focused mostly on gyms, locker rooms, building envelope, and MEP. The single educational work listed in the, in that 2,000 bond was the upgrade to the science labs. So, I just wanna, I just wanna underscore that there's no bond in recent memory that I can even find any evidence of that has touched the educational spaces that exist in those four buildings. Wrapping up this, you know, it hasn't, it hasn't, Hastings passed a lot of bonds. Underutilization of capital bonding has led to deteriorating buildings, which also pressure our budget and our reserves. This year alone, which Maureen mentioned a lot of this, we had a ceiling collapse in two classrooms over the summer. We'll get the price on what that was. We had the FMS flood. Luckily, we are well-covered by insurance and because we had all the A and E in, we had a very good paper trail for the insurance. But the FMS flood is $10 million of damage and months of that building being out of operation. Last week, we had a stairwell ceiling collapse up by Lloyd Library. We spent 100 grand last weekend, is that, that's accurate, right?
Yeah, I mean, we're waiting for the final bill, but that's the estimate, yeah.
This is brilliant, I might catch because collapse, we caught it before it did collapse.
Sorry, I didn't know, I was actually trying to think, what do I call it?
Stairwell ceiling failure.
Failure, okay.
Wait, he must...
That's fair enough.
Because they caught it, I mean, your staff caught it.
We're lucky no one got hurt.
Right, they discovered it and we immediately got on it because it was incredible.
Yeah.
Number one, and, and again, it wasn't a collapse, we discovered it, it was...
Right, that's fair, fair enough.
Having let a district force in the weekend, ceilings fell in on classrooms, I want...
Right, so neither of these are actual collapses, we caught them both.
That happened on the weekend after that, after the stairwell ceiling?
No, meaning in the grand school district, not land.
By the way, the, the ceiling at the Lloyd Library is totally unrelated to the flood, just to be very clear. Yeah, Maureen, those ceilings that we had to repair, the ceiling failures over the summer, do we know what those cost?
Um, I think, because they were, I think, about $30,000, but it was a, it was a much small, it was smaller than this repair and there was also walls involved here. So, this one, we began to notice it in one area and then architects and engineers came out and it's, I would say that's where the estimate, and the other piece was in the summer, there was no urgency to do, like, there was no, like, second shift work. You could work during the day. When you're dealing with unions, you're dealing with like second shift work, weekend work. And then it's also a larger air, a larger scope. I think the summer work, they, they were able to complete in two days, this is about a five-day repair, so estimating it, yes.
One in three we have to emphasize, I would just say, something that says we caught it in advance, just in advance of collapse or something.
Yeah.
I mean, this is heavy-duty concrete above the...
And plaster, yeah.
We don't wanna go further.
And doesn't just, I know you've done this, but I have to ask, then did you do another assessment of the entire...
They're in the process of doing that, yeah, well, great question.
You know, we have basement classrooms that remain, they're not accessible at all. We have, we have, because we have a cafeteria on the second floor, we have a huge number of classrooms in the basement of the building. And there's no accessible entrance for the FMS complex. Jody, this comes back to your question about why this entryway has to exist. You know, we have a, you know, an inaccessible building for many students who need access. There are students who cannot come to the school, who live in this district, that cannot come here. Not the only reason, but one of the, one of the significant reasons is because they cannot traverse the whole building. Or there are classes offered they cannot take because they cannot go to the classroom that's in the basement. Is that accurate?
Yes, but, and I think just at the, you know, being we are a public entity, not having a handicap-accessible building is, you know, I think this is not somebody's home, it is a public school building in New York State, you know. So, having a handicap-accessible entrance that is also like secure with, which we're required to have, security vestibules is now like the new requirement. So, I think it's students, it could be visitors, it could be a staff member that has an injury that, you know, just in terms of, currently, they have to either go up the steps to Mount Hope or go up this, you know, they would have to come in downstairs in the middle school. So, this really does give us accessibility and I think it's, again, when you have opportunities, you know, the state does look for you to improve, you know, grandfather you under the old conditions. But when you start kind of even adding, faced your building and all the rest, these are things in which they do have an expectation you're gonna correct as well. So, there, it is kind of, you know, sort of the norm to have accessible entrance to a public school building.
That's one of the criticisms I heard, you know, oh, well, Artsley's bond, they're putting in steam rooms. I mean, not actual steam rooms, I mean, like, no.
Stem.
Stem, fine, stem rooms, we'll call them. Stem, fine, stem rooms, we'll call them.
Steam rooms.
I'm sorry. But, yeah.
I gotta stretch out my steam room!
Yeah. And why isn't Hastings spending their money on that? Why are you wasting, why are you putting it on an entryway and a cafeteria? And again, this goes back to the notion of we are trying to provide what other schools have had for decades, an entryway that all kids can enter into, classroom space that the kids fit into. It's, it's not, for lack of a better term, it's not sexy stuff, but it is, it is the baseline, really, for a school. So-
To have a handicap-accessible-
School.
-secured vestibule. That's what we, every public school is required to have. We don't have it. We have to do it.
And I think additionally, a single point of entry for all staff and students is a security issue, and it has to be abided by, by everyone. That's not just students use this entrance, staff uses it, and the access points where the, your key card gets you into certain doors, that has to go away. And this is a security issue because we don't want to end up on the news that we have intruders in our building, or we have students that have access to get out, or teachers are using a, a door and a kid is sneaking in and doing stuff. It has to be a singular entry point into the building. We can't have multiple entry points. This is not the world we live in anymore.
I agree. Very good point.
And then Alex, just in terms of your, um, you know, when you talk about access to the building, there's two areas. There's the Lower Washington Wing currently that has no, it has no, um, handicap accessibility, because there's no elevator that goes down there. And then also the current, um, like, middle school that's under renovation. From, externally, it has a ramp, but then once you're there, you land off.
Right, can't get up.
So I think the idea too is, not every place, but when you have, by re reclaiming the cafeteria, if you then had students that had certain needs, you could, you know, place classrooms that the child could access. You know, like, right now, there's so many areas which are not, which, just even having some flexibility and having additional spaces.
Oh, right, not a hundred percent, but it's-
You never, yeah, we're not getting to a hundred percent, but we're improving the existing additions.
Are you talking about reconfiguring classrooms so that those particular students, those classrooms are near the entryway?
Yeah.
And they don't have to traverse the building?
Right, exactly. I think, I think just having different, you know, and in a particular year, if you had certain students that had different needs, then you could address it because you have more available space, like, with having the extra floor that is accessible. So I think that it's a, it provides, you know, flexibility in that, because there are certain areas that we're not addressing with elevators at this point in time, you know?
Yeah, for sure.
Can, can I ask one, one question about the cafeteria? I'm just curious about, wasn't there part of the glass fold thing that was taken out of the bond? It was, was it, was it the glass staircase or something?
The prep room, the prep.
Some of the interior rooms, which were constructed of glass, were, were taken out.
Well, no, what, what, the change, the change was, in the, in the cafeteria, there was also a community room, so it was adding an additional, like, thousand square feet to the footprint of the cafeteria. And the thinking there was that being the blue lecture room would, um, now become the kitchen, the kitchen of the caf-
Right, so that's not, okay.
So we, we said, okay, no, that is nice to have, but we, we feel, again, just trying to bring in the budget a bit, was it a necessary addition? And also, there are times, like, if you, we were authorized, if that were to happen, authorize a certain amount of money, you could always have a add alternate, meaning if we did the, the bid for the cafeteria, and then we said, well, it would have been really nice to try to get that room in there, and say the numbers coming more favorably, that's how you add back work. And it'd be, being, it may not be a huge scope change, but the concern right now is they were factoring that square footage number in, and that was a relatively high construction number. So we felt as though nice to have, you know, we could, we don't need to have a community room. We feel that the cafeteria itself could serve as a community room in itself. We don't need an additional side.
To, to your point, the, the roof deck thing was just part of the design from the architect. That's no longer in the bond.
Well, and that roof piece was also for science, and, and there was like a greenery. No, there wasn't instructional piece on that, but that is gone.
Right, right, but it's-
Because I, I mean, I think your point, though, is that we really listen to community. We've cut back as much as we can, but we also have to be careful, but as a community, that we fund our public schools and our infrastructure. Otherwise, we're going to find ourselves chasing our tails with falling buildings.
I will show you where we'll find ourselves in a couple of moments here, but, um, just on the fields briefly. The fields are in flux, so we don't really go into the, the substance of them perhaps. We talked about this. But why is Hastings considering new fields and considering artificial turf? Field developability has been a consistent problem, even with grounds crew doing all the things that we talk about, overseeding, aerating, things like that. It's, these, these fields still struggle because simply the amount of hours that the athletes need to get on them. District often needs to modify, cancel practices, home games are moved to away games, and the district needs to pay for busing. We've brought this up in a number of meetings. The district has been spending thirty thousand dollars a year, sometimes more, on additional busing due to field unavailability. The inconsistent schedule and additional travel weigh on, certainly on the athletes, certainly on their families, and especially also on the coaches. It's difficult to retain coaches when they have to constantly travel late, often on, on their own dime, in their own vehicles to the away games. Our lack of proper facilities is contrary to the Hastings ethos of sport, which is, we view athletic participation as a core, all-or-welcome endeavor. Teresa, you had asked about participation numbers, and reflecting that ethos-
Thank you for, for putting her together, whoever did it. Thank you.
Drew and, and Maureen.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, no, actually, no, Drew did that with his, a sport. I just shared it.
Okay, you shared it with me.
It's important data.
Yeah, I mean, in the high schools, this is from last year, because we don't have the, the spring seasons, right?
Yeah, it's twenty-three, twenty-four, but it's, I think-
Seventy percent of high school students participated in athletics. In middle school, you can see the green numbers, eighty-one percent. And we don't need to hit, hit it too hard, but, you know, we all know that sports helps build children's ability for, talking about executive function, talking about schedule-keeping, for rigor, teamwork, there's so many things, you know, there's so-
It's so important.
And they're off their cell phones.
Yeah, oh my god!
Very gay!
Yes, and they're in the fresh air. And, you know, there, there have been community members who said, when, since when did we become a district to focus on sports? We used to be known for arts, but-
That's actually not just true. I think we used to be known for arts-
Okay, good. Speak to that, please.
And for sports. Go into the Cochrane Gym and look at some of the things that are hanging up of champion, state championships and-
But, but to your point, it's not like it's, it's a niche of students. We're not catering to some ten percent-
Right, right.
Super, going to IMG Academy. These, this is like the whole school almost, like-
I, I actually think the thing about this district that's so special is that it, that a kid can play sports and be in the arts.
Yes.
And be, and be in the jazz band. They can do everything. They can be in the play and then go play in their, you know, field hockey game. I mean, that's what's the beauty of it.
There were a whole lot of athletes that battled the bands.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. So, just, that was a very important number there. There's also been a lot of misconceptions about the bond. Um, I, I, Maureen, you asked me to put both of them side by side. I didn't have time to do it, but let's just go through them. So the bond repayment will begin in twenty twenty-nine. What's come, what's been put out, and any community member reading the emails they've sent could be forgiven for thinking that this bond is gonna hit their taxes next year, because that's how it's presented. So, the bond repayment would begin at earliest in twenty twenty-nine.
Twenty twenty-nine, school year, right?
Twenty twenty-nine school year, right. Um, so there is no, you know, there's a, the four-year gap before that. And as I mentioned before, bonds are flat. So, whatever the cost is the first year, it's obviously the biggest bump, but they don't increase. They're just added on top, and then via inflation, they, they, their size diminishes.
And then Alex, the other piece is the bond that comes off a few years later.
So, two years later in twenty thirty-one, about a hundred dollars per household of bond debt rolls off. That's the twenty fourteen bond. And then there will only be the twenty eighteen bond still on. And that goes to twenty forty or something like that?
Yeah, and I, but I do think at one point or another, you know, they're in the distant, not, I'm saying that, but there will be a point at which you'll probably look to do something else. There'll be another cycle, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, we do have debt that's rolling off.
But we do, we do in that first few years. And again, I think the only other payment would be, um, probably the year before, probably have like a tan payment of a, of a couple hundred thousand of interest or something. But the, the real debt would not begin to twenty twenty-nine because of all the timing to get a bond.
Skipping number two, because that's just sort of reiterating number one. Number three, we maintain flexibility throughout the process. What's been brought up a lot is, we're gonna go out for a bond, and then what happens if Washington burns down, so to speak? You know, what's gonna happen? And we spoke about this. The bond is, as a, it's a flexible process. If, worst-case scenario, we borrow a bond, borrow the money, we pay the money back, no, the debt never hits the district. We never pay any interest on it. And there are other more realistic scenarios of flexibility with a bond. If the interest rates are high, we can, we can pay a small vig and we get a callable bond, which we can essentially refinance. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So, the bond process is built for uncertainty. So, uncertainty doesn't scare us. It doesn't scare the bond process. It is, it is, they're well-adapted to live side by side. Now, he says repayment schedule, this has come up, we're, the current consideration for this bond is a twenty-year term. And in the letter that got sent to the community, it, it's made to sound as though we are foregoing five years of reimbursement for New York State. They say basically, New York State only reimburses for fifteen years, and this bond will be twenty. But it's the same amount, and New York State always reimburses for fifteen years. Whatever the amount is, that's, they, they do fifteen parcels of it. It doesn't matter if you're, you're allowed, I believe, in New York State, a thirty-year bond. You're not foregoing reimbursement on that amount. It just-
You're just getting reimbursement sooner.
You just get, right, you get it, you get it in those fifteen years. If we borrowed a dollar from New York State, or whatever, they would reimburse us in fifteen installments over fifteen years. So, just wanna make sure that we're not foregoing any, any, by changing the term of the bond, we're not foregoing any reimbursement from New York State. Question comments, I'm gonna, um, skip to this, because you brought up, both of you brought up the Hillside, you know, what Hillside went through to get that bond passed. I just wanna point out, I don't know if this is even legible on the screen. No, it's much more legible, actually. Um, before, so after that, when Hillside was enlarged by that twenty eighteen bond, okay, the square foot per child that resulted in this current building is a hundred and thirty-three square feet. You can see that is well below the existing elementary schools of Artsy, Dobbs Ferry, and Irvington. If this building had not been built, we had one hundred and fourteen square foot per child. Leaving that aside, the whole idea that we would have trailers, so, that we have to rent trailers to accommodate kids, it's just this, this idea of how, how diminished this building was in comparison to everything else around us.
Absolutely.
And how, you know, a lot of people were fine with that.
Yeah.
And that, that, those energies are still here, and it's something that, you know, we really have to appeal to, not just from, from my perspective, not just from saying that, oh, you know, think about the kids that are in the schools. Again, all our home values depend upon the next generation of families that want to move here. That's just reality. It's not, you know, that's the reality. And it's not about having the fanciest school. It's not about having, you know, the, the most modern one, but it is, it is having a floor under it.
Absolutely.
It is not having trailers outside. It is not having half your school shut down for half a year. It is not constantly being in crisis mode. It is not having to make cuts in our budget because we spent, you know, eight hundred thousand dollars on, on the building next year.
It is, it is not foregoing services for special education students because there's no room.
Right, that's a great point.
Yeah, that's a great point.
It is not, it is not offering therapeutic services in really, like, in offices or closets, right? It's not having, taking your test in the hallway so that you can get extra time. It's having an adequate space, which actually is really important for self-esteem, not just academic modifications.
Yeah, very well said. Thank you. Um, often comes up this idea that Hastings is a sort of profligate district. And, you know, this is taken from submitted budgets last year. You can see, this is a per-student cost. And we, we, we pointed on the last meeting was that our budget is ranked in the very top for instructional spending, the amount of money, the percentage of our budget. Per-student comparison, we spent last year thirty-seven seven hundred. You can just sort of, you can see the numbers here, you know. I just wanna highlight that, you know, it's not this aspirational thing, like fancy districts spend the most. You can see Putnam Valley here at forty thousand. Um, you know, these just reflect the cost environment we live in. Our spending is not aspirational. It is just, it is responding to the price environment of everything around us in New York State, which is very high. There's also this idea that there was sort of this golden age twenty years ago where not much money was spent, and, and everything was fine, and, you know, we all live within our means. But I don't think, especially newer trustees know this. So Cuomo's tax, New York State tax cap was passed in twenty twelve. Before that, what were HOH budgets like? And you can see here, from twenty, from two thousand to two thousand and nine, the average tax levy, so this is not budget, this is the average tax increase that a resident bore was eight point three six percent per year. The budget went from twenty-two million dollars in the year two thousand to forty-one point five in the year two thousand and nine. Went up eighty-eight percent. The student population grew thirteen percent. And you can see, it's not like there was one big outlier year that, that triggered this. You can see the listing there. They're, they're all quite similar. Recent Hastings' tax levy changes, we averaged two point seven percent over the past four years. It's very similar picture going back even farther, but I just wanted to capture sort of a, a current view. You can see here, two point eight three, one point nine two, two point eight three, three point one nine. Federal inflation over that same period was four point eight five percent per year. So our tax levy changes have been well under the, the federal rate of inflation over the same time period. Just to put it in perspective, we are in New York State, okay? New York State spends an average, this is seven hundred and six school districts across New York State, spend an average of thirty-six thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars per student. We are just a little bit above what the state average is. And this is a twenty-one percent statewide increase since two, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. It's, New York State education spending has gone up massively, even as the population has dropped, okay? I, and there's this other talking point that, well, you know, the, the, the enrollment, the school's not increasing, why are the costs going up? In, in the seven hundred and six school district, I mean, you can see the overall picture here. Enrollment dropping statewide, cost skyrocketing. There are seven hundred and six school districts in New York State. Only ten percent of those districts had an increase in population over the ten years between twenty thirteen and twenty twenty-three. Ten percent, a little more, it's like eighty, eighty districts. Only eleven of those districts are in the Westchester-Putnam area. Okay, so fifty-six districts in Westchester-Putnam, eleven schools had increases in enrollment. Hastings is one of them, actually, two point three percent increase in enrollment. So, this idea that, you know, if, if enrollment's level, prices, you know, the, the cost shouldn't go up. It, it's, it's just, I mean, it's a fallacy, because statewide, even in districts, and there are enormous districts that have lost tons of kids, their budgets never go down. They might not go up as much, but they, they don't go down. And so, we, we do have a modest increase. And I, I think I mentioned to somebody, Hastings, in the past forty years, every decade, we have about a hundred and fifty unit increase in housing. Happened forty years ago, thirty years ago, twenty years ago, ten, you know, and currently, that's our trajectory. As a board, we have to consider the fact that the, the village population has grown eight percent, census is census, and that the units are increasing. So, while we may be flat, this idea that we're gonna have diminishing population, it's just not very credible, uh, for our purposes.
And we don't have a strong commercial tax base.
Right.
Right? So, property owners are carrying the school.
Yeah, I mean, that is, you know, that's, that's, that's a very good point. It's not that we don't have a, you know, um, revenue problem per se, but it's, it's, it all falls on us. Like I said, we do have revenue problems, right? We don't have a spending problem, but we, it's, it's because the taxpayers feel it.
It's all on the property owners.
Right, it's all on property owners. And this is a slide just to show that this is statewide, all funds for twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five. You can see it's four point nine percent annual growth, which is very simple, which is above the federal infla- for the inflation rate that we're beneath. And again, I mean, we talk about this from time to time. New York State is just an absolute outlier when it comes to spending, um-
Yes.
You know?
And then, put on top of it, we are in Westchester County, which is one of the most expensive places in the country.
Yeah, I mean, New York State, top five for energy costs, top five for insurance costs, top five for building costs, and it's not even, it's really not even close. Um,
Then we could do it, we could overlay construction costs, because I know, I, I was looking at research that somewhere between forty and sixty percent over a five-year period.
An increase.
Yes, I, I saw that too. That's, that's the increase.
So you could do separate charts that kind of show that, and it's only gonna get worse. So that's kind of the ta- the takeaway, yeah.
But on the flip side of it, because New York State invests so much in education, we do have really strong school leaders and principals, right? We're like, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's a good thing, and we have robust educational offerings, but it's expensive.
But it's expensive.
And that people have to accept.
Right.
Because we want a high-quality education.
And we are rated, I think it's eighth, eighth in the county, Hastings is?
On which thing?
Westchester Magazine.
Oh, you mean like, like, like?
I mean, you, you know, the, I, I've heard community members say, like, I don't want to invest in the schools, the test scores are down.
Uh, right, right.
Come on, like, this is a really strong school district.
This is impossible to read. I'm so- This is impossible to read, I'm so sorry, but you can see New York towards the bottom in bold, and the green bar is the amount of New York State school funding that is funded by local taxes. And what you can tell from this chart, so I think the blue is federal, green is...
The blue is state.
Oh, you can actually read it on this one, I guess, sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, state, right, right, and the, the red is federal.
State.
Right. And so the New York, New York as a state is, I think, number, I tried to measure these bars, but like, number two or number three for depending upon the local taxpayer to, to fund the schools, basically.
But as the governor says, we contribute way more federally than we give back.
Yeah, yes, which is another conversation, but also it's the local taxpayers, it's a local education authority, so it's also that revenue piece, like, thinking about our downtown, thinking about our land adjacent to the Sawmill, like, what can be done to sort of relieve the burden. So I, I do look at the trustees and our mayor, and I say, like, let's, let's think about some creative solutions there too, and really work as a team as we move forward.
One of the things that we brought up, oh, yeah, one of the things we brought up, I mean, people poo-pooed it when we brought it up, but the idea that, that Electric Owl is going to come in and start paying taxes, you know, that's, that's more than a million dollars of revenue that's going to hit the school's bottom line, hopefully when it arrives. That's the reality, you know, the development opportunities that haven't happened or didn't happen here, and that's, that's a piece of the puzzle, so. Anyway, that's what we sort of laid out.
Thank you so much.
Of course.
Are we, what's our communication plan now with the community? I heard something about a forum, right? Like, don't we do like a info session or something?
Yeah, so we have, we have, we've had on hold a multifaceted plan, which I think we can just start rolling out tomorrow, if the board's fine with that, and I think the centerpiece is what Alex has put together here, because there are two slides we might want to edit.
Yeah.
And other than that, I think this becomes the basis for meeting and FAQ. There is a parent, PTSA-sponsored forum Thursday evening, that Alex will be there, and I would suggest this be the focus of that.
I agree.
And then, and then on the budget, just if there are questions, we speak to questions, but just put the energy, because this is so well done. And I can see pieces of it getting pulled out for social media, but basically, everything we've talked about, this now gives us the basis in good, clear language. The only thing I would suggest changing is the verb collapse, because we caught it before.
That really bothers you.
And then we just, we're still, the flood number is, it could be between...
Slide 17, sorry.
I just also wanted to correct that Irvington does get over, like, a little bit, they get less than us, but they do get like 30-something percent.
Could be.
And I just don't want to, like, say this.
Oh, I, yeah.
We could take a, everybody look through it one more time and...
You could, I think you all did look at it, right?
Yeah.
It was only just the, the number, like, we're just anticipating for the flood down.
Yeah, we could take a quick look.
It's a range right now.
And the only other thing would be just on 17, correcting bond misconceptions or something. You know, but I, this, so we can, I think, start to get, get busy.
Can I ask a question regarding, no, I can't, thank you.
Stop, stop.
We didn't really touch much on turf versus natural grass on this, but, you know, I think that those are the two options, but I know that in conversations that I have with community members, because there have been some forums on an alternate natural growing surface.
Or a hybrid.
Hybrid, right? Is there anything that we can address regarding that?
I think we should table that, have that discussion another time, when we have more other information. Bill?
I, I think, we're doing some exploring.
Okay.
That in the public record on December 17th, there was a slide that quite distinctly said why, while, why turf talents and drain talents are, are a difficult path for us, because of bidding requirements in the state of New York, no, the sole proprietorship, we don't have anyone to compare it to, as, it's a very compelling set of options, but we cannot also point to any school district in the United States of America that has done this. So in deference to the taxpayers, you know, my concern would be bringing forward something where there's no proof of concept, and we may not get also 47% back on it. So that it, there's quite a hit financially, take a chance on whether this would really work in terms of usage and all the rest maintenance. But having said all that, we're doing some additional exploring, but I think we should stay, my recommendation is more to stay, still go down the nat, you know, a mixed model of the natural, the artificial, while we try and explore, is there any potential on that other. But again, on December 17th, we put in the public record, it shouldn't be lost, you know, with all due respect to that firm, there's several big hurdles that would have to be paid attention to.
I think this goes in line with Teresa was talking about, with the 47%, right, that, you know, people are, this third talking point that has already been addressed, but is not part of the public conversation, becomes an issue, because the choice is between a mixed model or just grass, right? But there are community members who believe that there's a third model, but because of this December meeting, and the bid process, and all these other reasons why this is a near impossibility to do, the community's still standing behind it, and still having forums and conversations, and I don't want them to waste their time on something that is, is an impossibility.
Well, I will say that that topic is being, is being revisited, yeah, actively.
Yeah, and knowing for you as a board, I'm assuming you as a board would not agree to give up a 40, 47% return.
Right, there would be, there would be no return on a non-bid hybrid model that...
Now, we are beginning to sort out other portions of the work that would be a reimbursement, and then do we say we could even out? But, you know, I think to Jody's point, maybe next meeting, an excellent question for you would be, are you willing as a district to recommend the expenditure of tax dollars on an, to now unproven product within a public school district? Meaning, I'm saying that because of all the parameters and requirements and all the rest. If I'm back in my private school days with the ability to get private donors, that's a different conversation, right? If I'm in a higher ed environment, you know, or a lot of the examples now are, here's what FIFA's doing, here's what they're doing before the World Cup, there's millions upon millions of corporate dollars behind field upkeep.
Yeah.
You know, and these are multimillion-dollar athletes who will not agree to play on but the best quality, so we've got to have it apple to apple.
Yeah.
So, but here's another simple question, are you willing to say, let's vote to expend Hastings tax dollars and be the test case? Or, you know, so you might, so we can come back to that, we are doing a little homework. Is that helpful?
Yeah, that is.
But I would point people, if you need be, but I think we can, anyway, please talk.
Bill, just a question on, it's proprietary, right? So it's, it's also proprietary, it kind of doesn't go with source selection, so...
Yep.
That's, you know, that's a different topic, that really, to me, doesn't make it doable, unless it's free.
Yeah, unless we can, unless there, unless we can fine-tune, if we, no pun intended, we can layer the work, and so there may be some parts of that work that might be, because we bid to a different firm that, you know, you could do a bidding with, right? Preparation.
Right.
You know, and that for something else, but wait, we're looking at it.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. I thank all, all of us for the, the energy behind it.
So you are, are you presenting this on Thursday for the PTSA?
You were out of the room, and we said you weren't.
You weren't?
Oh, I was in the bathroom. That's fine.
Surprise!
That's fine, it's better than sitting there.
Do you need, like, do you need our support in some way, like, tell us, like...
No, if you want to see something else in there, for sure, you know, but...
There was one thing, if you mentioned, I'm trying, there was one thing, I'll have to check my note.
Okay.
Teresa mentions here, but I don't think it was on yet, because I can't remember.
The special ed breakout rooms?
Maybe it was a special.
Oh, yeah, send me whatever notes that come, come to top of mind, and I'll incorporate, I mean, it represents, especially then, our collaborative effort here.
Yeah.
David's security point.
Handicapped, secured vestivale.
You know, one entrance is security.
No brainer in a public school.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good note.
This is the end of your presentation?
Oh, I was, I was in the bathroom, it already ended.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much for this, and I really, when we were having the architects and the firms come in, and they were presenting on a lot of the things that you were talking about, I think it may have been lost, a lot of it was lost on me, because it was, it was new, it was heavy, it was highly detailed, right? And now we're getting into some, like, real, just nitty-gritty detail that the community needs to know, and I think that maybe the architectural firms were sharing just a little too much, that it became overwhelming, and I think that led to a swell-up of, this is too much, too fancy, too this, but now that we're breaking this down in a, in a more manageable way, that, I don't want to discount the community and say that, like, they couldn't understand what they were doing, but this, this puts it in a way that, like, wow, I really understand what's going on here, you, this makes a lot more sense, it's quick, it's succinct, I get it now. I still might vote no, I still might vote yes, but there's information here, and then when we look at our neighboring districts, it's really important, so...
It puts in perspective.
It puts it in a much better perspective, and I think coming from the electeds, right, coming from people who live in the community that are, that are saying it this way, hits differently than it does from the architectural firm.
Yeah, no, definitely.
From people who are going to pay this tax and...
Yeah, we're all paying, going to pay this as well, so.
Yeah, no, I look forward to Thursday night, actually.
I just want to say, you know, they also modify the front entrance to, it's slightly different, you know, the, the front vestivale, because there's a shippo requirement, so it's actually, like, smaller.
I wanted to get, you were too busy, I wanted to get the image of the new one, it's a little, it's nice, it's a little tamer.
It's a little scaled down, like, so in terms of, and I think they were initially just kind of trying to, it's not fully designed, they tried to give an understanding of where it would look, and some ideas, because they knew, as Alex had mentioned, when there's an, an older building, they don't want it to take, distract from the original design, so typically they are looking, shippo does like the use of glass on enclosures and things of that nature, to, to not then, you know, not try to match the existing building or replicate it, they want something that, you know...
Yeah, and they're not a rubber stamp.
I mean, there was like four or five different designs that they had to do before it even got approved.
Right, shippo's not a rubber stamp, they want it, they really do want it.
No, it's like, they, I mean, that is, they, like, approve designs before they could even go then to the state ed.
Right.
Um, so we move on to the FMS update?
Sure.
There's some...
Wow!
I mean, I'm sorry, is there anything else, or?
No.
No.
Tell, do you, listen, when's the presentation for PTSA? Thursday, this week?
Yeah.
Okay. Do, I mean, we, we could be there.
Sure, for sure, we're married.
You can take my space. I'm just tired, I'm tired.
Any other last comments on that? I'm just trying to be mindful of the time.
No, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I can, I can just write up some bullet points about the breakout rooms and that kind of stuff, and then you can copy it.
Bring it, I'll add them in. So FMS floods, I know there's some bond pertinent update from, I think.
Well, well, right now, we are at the state, so with the scope being what it, it currently is, and again, on that slide, you know, that, that's at the higher level, the 10 million, depending upon where, so New York State as our permitting agency that oversees construction work in New York State schools, with the scope, as it became larger, as time went on, there was, you know, we had some questions here last week in regards, when I presented to the board about the fire suppression system, and then we started to talk about other potential code compliance items, we really then were like, we need to, we're in the process of submitting, of course, a fire suppression system has to be approved by the state, it's not something you could just, you know, putting up a wall in kind where it was is one thing, and then submitting later, putting a fire suppression system in a New York State school requires them to review the design and ensure, you know, which we, of course, want them to do, you know, although we trust our engineers, of course, you want that, that engineering review on it. So with that, with that conversation, and then discussing other code type compliance, so the Fargo Middle School, of course, was grandfathered in that section of the building, Fargo Wing, due to its age, it wasn't required to have the updated fire suppression system and all ventilation, all the rest. Some of the things in which are, in our current bond scope, if the state were to say, with the, with the work that's going on related to the flood, this is not part of that work, you know, that may change what we have in our bond, right? So that would actually not be a bad thing, because it would reduce the scope of our bond, and it would be picked up elsewhere by insurance possibly, but we are looking for guidance from the state on that, and saying, you know, and they're really the, the authority that we defer to in terms of how that needs to happen. I mean, there is a, we, we feel as though, you know, although when you, we were talking about it today, the architect and I, if it was fire, it would be, you would visually see the damage, which, you're like, oh, you know, you can...
Yeah.
If, if it not burned down to the ground, but if there was like an interior fire that burned out the space, all of these, they would be full code compliance. Water, I think, because even the state was shocked at the, not shocked, but the, the level of how that water flowed, and, and the areas in which it did end up impacting, I think them having a larger understanding of the total scope now may trigger that code compliance piece of the restoration, I'll call it, of the building. So again, that being said, we have full commitment from architects and the instruction folks and all the rest, that once the state gives us the direction, what, you know, what we're required to do to get the building, to get the building permit, you know, to reopen, we're still on the same timeline, we just, you know, had to pause to wait for their, and out, like, just to kind of catch up on where we are, the state, and they are having another conversation Friday afternoon, you know, just to give them a couple of days with their, their team up there to kind of look through, all the documentation's been provided, have a good understanding of the project, and to then give us direction. And when I say us, it would be direction to our architects who represent the, you know, the school board, and then we'll be able to update you. I mean, the, the thing is, from everyone involved, in terms of, once the state gives us direction, and they, they understand the urgency of us to get back to that space that we're displaced, and that, you know, we're displaced for the rest of the year, but, and that, because of course, if they, that would require them to kind of expedite the reviews on their end as well, right? Because they have to tell us what to do, approve plans and all the rest, so, but we're confident, again, I mean, that made me feel reassured, because every, all, all the people that have been involved up to this point are comfortable with, you know, as long as the state gives us direction, they're still on that same timeline. So, but it may mean...
That's good news.
If we get the, again, disconnected the budget, if, if it's possible that some of these will be required by the state, that would change, you know, what may, we would then pull some of those items out of the bond, because they would be done now as far as larger scope.
Okay, that's good news.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments?
It's free.
I like that comment. Moving on to administrative reports from Dr. Zmansky, anything to pull out?
I did want to address some misconception, I heard the microphone, just to be very clear so that everyone knows what I'm saying. So HASP and PL, I know the way that it's...
Oh, the mic, yeah, sorry.
Okay. Sorry. I, I did want to address some misconception that, that I heard at the microphone related to the budget. So on the slide, I know with all the mathematics, it might have been hard to, you know, extrapolate all the moving parts, but the, the addition for HASP and the addition for PL, if those were to shift to different apartment, departments, that does not take away from electives that sit within a department, I just want to be really clear. So they were visually there because they were attached to a person who currently works in the department. And so it doesn't change program, so I just wanted to make sure that I addressed that, because I heard it, and people may be confused, and that is not the case. Those are in addition to program, so if the HASP and PL shift to a different department, the rest is still fully intact and stands. The second is, my understanding is, we are offering three sections of creative writing, and not two, again, so there's no reduction there.
That was a reference to the old presentation on Sunday.
Yes, okay. There, we will, there, in the initially proposed budget, there was not the elimination of eight electives in social studies, and I know we've come to a different place, I just wanted to be clear on that. And then one big thing that I want us to think about is, while students with IEPs can be eligible for academic intervention support, under the MTSS umbrella and AIS, the majority of students served by AIS do not have IEPs, and students with IEPs may be, like, they can have additional services attached to their IEP that are not AIS, so that could be a resource room, it could be other things. So I, I didn't want people to think that that would be a shift from collapsing an AIS section.
Good, good point.
Well, we will do some personal outreach to clarify.
Yeah.
Oh, good.
Okay. And then I did want to highlight, we have, I'll be super brief. ELA curriculum inquiry work is going really well. I'm so proud of our middle school ELA team and so thankful for the leadership of Sarah Walters as department chairperson to help move that work along. Same thing for the art curriculum inquiry. We've started work in the area of ceramics around authentic learning and really anchoring that in the presentation standards of the ceramics program looking K-12. Thank you to Ezra and the art department for being such key partners in that. The K-12 gender committee met as planned over a series of sessions. We had lively committee meetings and members were informed from the get-go that the district guidance was that the gender work would continue and that's memorialized in correspondences that Bill has sent out um, in, in affirming ways that I've sent out. And the support of the committee was to make recommendations on how to best move forward and really taking a good, close look at those gender lessons. The committee had diverse perspectives in the room, which ended up being essential and very, very important as we looked at our system. And we also looked at the broader context of the work. The committee, uh, had community agreements. It's all there. It's memorialized here. I'll be sending something out tomorrow that's already drafted more broadly to the community. Uh, but really, we listened to children. We listened to the focus groups that were randomly selected. The committee was unanimous that the gender lessons should remain as standalone lessons, that they'll continue largely as is. Couple little tweaks based on what we learned from children who are receiving this, uh, as their curriculum, uh, work, as their lessons. So we'll continue to gather more data. We still need additional teacher perspective. We need to see the lessons in action. And so this will be ongoing. The members of the gender committee raised the question of, of perhaps moving into a more expansive role, just like we have for Exploring Equity. There's that wheel of lots of different areas of cultural competence. And so that's for consideration right now, too. And then finally, shifting gears, uh, and I do want to thank them. Sorry, I know it's late, but they are, they were exceptional. And they had so much civil disagreement and probing and honoring each other's humanity and respectful conversation. And yes, the design of the work was deliberately designed for that. But largely the people who were in the room were so invested in care and, um, just moving forward and understanding that there are places that we may not have alignment, but we are a hundred percent aligned on our dedication to children. So it was great work. It was hard work and I'm really proud of everybody. Um, restorative practices, we've had a committee that's finalizing the selection of a new thought partner. There was a question raised around, uh, implementation of restorative practices. To what extent is that actually happening? How are we tracking it? We paused this year. And that is because what ended up happening was when we designed the portrait of a Hastings learner, there was an action plan that was developed for implementing restorative practices work. Um, at no fault to the zealousness of some people in the system, they had already taken leadership and run with it and started some things. So it took us off the plan. So we were trying to kind of catch up with that when that was initially launched. And that was because people had done their work in their previous school, they had a relationship with the provider, things moved. Um, not understanding like we'd had to move forward as a system. So that's just factually true. That's not meant to disparage anybody. Um, and kudos for all the excitement around it. So people were trained, um, and, and it, it didn't match the initial action plan. But what I learned this year, when, when I helped to kind of re-harness it with a group of people, um, what we wound up doing is starting the work, getting the formative feedback from the participants who were struggling to take what they were learning conceptually to put it into practice. And what I heard from the faculty again and again is that they needed some, they needed the direct boots on the ground, so the now what. And so what, as a committee, we came to discover is that we needed to vet some different thought partners. We're right at the end of our process. I want to thank HEF for the seed money, for the grant to get moving on that. Um, and we've put in a new grant for next year. We have two providers. We're right at the end. We're very excited. The committee's been exceptional, very, very rigorous, rubrics, alignment to the portrait, uh, data-driven vetting of, of different thought partners. Um, and that's where we are with that. So I did want to address that.
It's a good update.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to add really quickly, we'll have a letter going out from the district in the next day or two on the continuation of the, uh, uh, gender lessons and what it means at middle school and high school.
That's great.
So, because it's now a district level issue and, or, excuse me, it's managed at the district level and it's important. And I think Melissa will send that communication out.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Uh, moving on to, this is official report. You kind of...
Yeah, I had just mentioned the only, um, update, which we've already spoken about it, is the, um, impacted ceiling. And as I mentioned before, uh, I believe they're finishing up tonight. So after this meeting, we can go down and check that out a lot. But, but, um, they are, they were gonna work till midnight tonight to...
Send us photos.
Yeah, to, uh, to make sure that we can, um, get back in the space tomorrow. And just, just in terms of all these repairs, I mean, there are many years in which this is kind of par for the course. It's not unique only to Hastings, I think, schools in the area. It's just like our homes, right? If your home is relatively new, there always seems to be something that, you know, pops up that needs to be addressed. So I say that to say, I think we, we see more of it because of the age of our buildings and because, to your point, we haven't had, when we've had bonds, they've, we've used it well to address certain areas, but you know, there's always something else that is going to be, needed to be addressed. Um, I just want the board and the community to have full confidence that, um, you know, there are things that could be fine regardless of the age. We understand the age of the building. We understand the construction of the building. When buildings are inspected one year, and I, this is more just related to the earlier question, things could look, um, can be fine, right? They can, although be old, be not, um, separating from, um, the wire laff or different things. Like it didn't just, in a year's time, even maybe with no water, no, no other reason, just age, things can then start to break and crack. So I just want you to know that, you know, thankfully we do have very good internal people and it is very difficult. And it would be no different than in your own home. Something may be fine one day. Not to minimize it, but it's a lot of building. We have a lot of eyes on it, including architects, but it's, it's, you know, we had a full inspection and then, you know, 12, 18 months later, there are some now areas that are not in the shape they were 12 or 18 months earlier. So just to assure you that we are now, as Bill had said, we are now going back through other areas where we know has very similar construction to ensure the integrity of those spaces. So that's...
Thank you. Thank you. Um, moving on to business items, any questions or comments regarding business items one through 19? Very quick, thank, thank you to Hastings Little League for the, uh...
Yeah, lovely.
The storage shed, the outdoor storage shed is number 19.
I was hoping it survived.
Yeah. Is there a motion to approve business items one through 19?
So moved.
Second, Catherine? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Um, moving on to appointments, are there any questions or comments regarding appointments one through three? Is there a motion to approve our appointments?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Moving on to leaves of absence, it's just one. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve the leave of absence?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to minutes, um, these would have been from last meeting, March 11th. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve our minutes from the March 11th meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to second read, um, these have been policies that we looked at on the 11th. This is the policy 8130, school safety plan and teams, 1120R, school district records regulation and 8113, extreme heat condition days. Um, these are second reads, so we're voting on, voting them in. Are there any questions or comments regarding these three policies? Is there a motion to approve the policies?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Moving on to second public comment, there is no public, so we'll move on to agenda review. The next meeting is gonna be...
Do you have a comment?
Quick. We're gonna...
Thank you.
We have one thing. Yes.
Yeah.
It's a good point.
Oh, yeah, I know you know. Thanks, Susan.
Oh, her son's in our class.
That's a good callback.
Isn't it?
Yeah, that is a good point.
Yes. That's what they do at the Hastings Adams, but it winds up getting very heated.
Yes, it's true. No, it's true. Uh, so April 8th, we're gonna be, the, the, the small headline is inclement weather days. So we're gonna be talking about their distribution potentially. Um, and we're finalizing the language for the referendum. Does that mean only 8th, we're locking it down?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think you have to vote on it on the 22nd, so at that point, it's only the language.
Vote is on the 22nd, though, okay.
Yeah, but you have to, to give us the...
Oh, the, the notice.
Well, you have to tell us how amongst yourselves, like what'll be on the referendum, in what form?
For the budget.
No, no, for the bond.
For the bond, for the bond.
Yeah, we're missing...
So we should probably, we don't have to do it right now, we should get a work session or, or executive...
So, on, yeah, so we, we were meant to put on the 8th that, that we would have a budget. There it is, continued budget discussion. Um, so you may want to think it's asked, you just, whether you want a work session ahead of the 8th. Um, but, you know...
Okay.
You know, maybe we'll...
We'll line it up.
Yeah, because the bond, the bond referendum, how it's gonna be stated, like the exact scope of work with the exact budget, with the exact how it's gonna appear on the ballot, has to be on April 22nd, you're up to do it. Because that's when the secret's coming done and the shipo, but in order to make that date, that's legal. The last meeting you have before we need to post in the newspaper, like a week later.
So what I'm hearing is tomorrow, Melissa D. and I can begin working with you on what a, a, a work date would be, a work session date.
Yeah, it's smart.
And the other thing I do need from the board, being I have, because speaking to the architects and it was to your point or somebody's point about, you know, assuming, we, we're having some sort of bond, right? We know that. What, when the forum, um, prior to the budget vote, right, the, we would have either have the architects come back here, like just to kind of, they're, they're asking like what you would want of them because that is typical where either they would come back, um, they would, do, do they need to come back and present this shipo, you know, the, the finding, I mean, it's gonna be, finding's gonna be the finding, but, um, they were just inquiring. So in other words, I, we had put down a date of like April 29th as like a potential. I know it's not a real meeting. They were like, if you want to come on the 22nd, but they need to know, like they're kind of at a point where they need to have some dates locked in.
When we get the stuff, can we look at it and see if we, if we have enough question?
But do you think, I, I know, but I think I need to probably...
Oh, you need to let them know ahead of time?
Lock them in, so would you want them coming to the 22nd meeting, the April 22nd meeting, the night you vote on it, or do you want them?
I guess it makes sense if we're gonna be asking them questions that the community hears at the same time we're voting on it. Yeah, I think, that probably, that probably would make sense.
Remember, on that day, like the referendum line, which will be on the agenda already.
Yeah.
Or you vote on the 22nd, that's why on the 8th, you have to direct us on what is going to be included.
So could they come for the work session or is that too soon?
I don't know, because they, they had very limited, I mean, they are so locked in with so many, you know...
Because the work session's done in public but without public comment, that's the only difference.
I know, but I guess it would really, we would have to pose them some dates tomorrow and see if they can make those. I had just locked them in for some random dates, assuming the board was gonna adopt it the 22nd and if you wanted to do a community forum that they would attend or something.
My advice to the board is if, if that's the first time you're hearing from them and you're voting that night, I, I think you want to avoid that. So maybe mor- morning tomorrow, we check on dates.
Anything earlier, we can sort of work around it.
Work session in. Does that make sense?
It does, but I just know what they're gonna be, probably like it'd be very difficult to just have them co- I mean, if they're gonna come in, it'll be...
Yeah, we'll just ask.
Yeah, no, it's fine. But we just have to be very flexible with the...
And we could, we could have them virtually as well. That's legal, so worst case scenario.
Um, let me flag one thing on the 8th. Um, we have down here smartphone and device update.
Oh.
Um, we are incredibly busy and also the governor may still be coming at us with a policy deadline of August. So I haven't fully checked with Andy and Scott, uh, but I think just an update...
You wanna punt it?
Well, that's what I'm asking. Um, the, the reality is for policy adoption, you need a couple of months cycle and swing. You know, so which means...
I don't think we can delay.
Do we have anything substantive to talk about?
Well, I want to talk with them about what kind of, where, I mean, Scott has very definite ideas. And I think Andy's got pretty well-formed ideas. Uh, it, it might be healthy for the board to actually talk with them about their rea- give some reactions. Because at the end of the day, you're gonna have to vote on a policy. And it may be a good way, as busy as you are, I would just pick that time to give some guidance so you're not totally against the wall, but...
That's fine.
Let me check it, we'll play it by...
Yeah, if they have something substantive to say, then...
They do, and then I think it's a matter of when we fit that in to get some board feedback.
It was lovely to hear them speak today. They were outstanding.
Yeah.
They were.
They were.
Outstanding.
So, nice. All right, moving on to...
It was great to have them here, all three of them.
We'll have them here every week, that's all.
Uh, moving on to board comments, anyone? Just thank, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing the presentation.
My pleasure, my pleasure. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn on the...
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second!
All in favor?
Everyone get home safely.
Thank you.